Tom will be joining us probably in about forty-five minutes. He's at the rec meeting right now in order to have a quorum.
Good evening, and welcome to the Norfolk Board of Selectmen's meeting of Tuesday, March nineteenth. My name is Jim Leahan. To my left is my associate, Mr. Kelcutt. To his left is Sue Jacobson, our executive assistant. Our interim town administrator, Todd Lindmark, is attending a recreation meeting in order for them to have a quorum. And he will be up shortly, probably in about thirty-five to forty minutes for the remainder of the meeting. Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. I'll remind everyone that this meeting is being both audio and videotaped in compliance with MAST open meeting laws. In absence of Mr. Lindmark, I will read the agenda for this evening. We have Rich McCarthy, who is going to do a Complete Streets prioritization plan. We have Hillary Cohen. And, well, actually, let me leave those agenda items as they develop, because we have a long list under our DPW department tonight. In terms of action items, we have two appointments: Janice Ashberg and Tom "Mayor" Billy, I hope I pronounced that correctly, to the Council on Aging, Norfolk Clean and Green Campaign, and we have a deed signing for sixty-six Priscilla Avenue, which we'll elaborate on. We will have an executive session this evening to discuss strategy concerning both police and fire union negotiations. Rich, the evening is yours, sir.
Thank you.
Would you like to come up here, or would it be easier? What's easiest for you? Mrs. Gleason is pointing up here, and... Whatever you'd like.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Kelcutt. Board! There you go. The... So tonight, we'll have a presentation from Howard Stein-Hudson, which is the final work phase of the Complete Street Program, which is the prioritization plan that will be submitted to MAST, which outlines projects that we want to seek future funding from a range of different activities, from transportation. So if you remember, we had a meeting in, a community meeting, back in December, December sixth, I think, was the date, if I recall correctly. And prior to that, we had a Wiki map that was up on the website as well, in the library. And it was an opportunity for residents to be able to give comments town-wide, whether it was related to biking, walking, driving, taking mass transit, bus, you name it, related to different transportation modes. They gave their feedback on the map. So from that feedback from the maps, the community meetings that we had, discussions with department heads, DPW, we're in the final phase, putting the prioritization plan together. And what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna defer to Casey and Paul from Howard Stein-Hudson to be able to...
Hillary just walked in.
Hillary just walked in.
Walked in. I'm sorry to interrupt the presentation, but I think her item is gonna take about two minutes.
Do you want to do that quickly?
I think it probably would work.
Do you mind?
No, I don't mind.
I apologize, Rich.
That's okay. That's okay. We're being considerate of other people's times. Thank you. Are you folks okay with that?
We're fine.
Hillary, we're gonna... This will, this will cost you, Hillary.
Yeah, it sure will.
Next time you turn my dog in, there'll be no fine, right? Thank you all for your understanding on this. Thank you.
So, very brief, brief history. I've been working on an MOU amongst three separate towns for several years. Always got derailed just from different people taking the role. We, last year, had Foxborough sign the MOU agreement. And in light of what happened in January, when I was on a mutual aid call for a different town, the chief and I were very adamant that they sign the MOU in the towns that I was mutulating for. So this is all the same as the Foxborough one, and it just spells out the liability of who owns who when we go into everybody's towns and help out.
I have no questions on the draw, Kevin.
None whatsoever.
No, no. I congratulate you. Anytime we can get cooperative opportunities between our communities, it's always a good thing.
I just need your John Hancock copies.
I don't think I can sign that name.
It is...
Went right by.
You can sign whatever you like.
Oh! Touche.
So, last page of all three copies. One will go back to Millis.
Okay.
One will go back to Medway, and one will stay here.
All right. Well, do we, we should probably vote this. We don't have it as an action item, unfortunately.
It does say signatures required, though.
It just says Chair Board of Selectmen's signature required.
Correct.
Does, does this say signature?
Yeah, the agenda does.
Oh, very good. Okay. You're okay?
Hillary, could I just ask that you send a copy back to us, so I can give it to Todd? He likes copies of everything that's...
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Boy, that's the quickest recreation meeting ever held.
Yes, it was.
I'll second that. There you go.
Thank you very much.
You're most welcome. Okay, we good? All right. My apologies. Thank you for your patience, Rich, and it didn't take long. Hillary, thank you. Nice to see you. Everything good?
Everything's great.
Great.
So without much more discussion from me, I'm gonna turn it over to Casey and Paul, and they can go through the presentation. And we have some questions. We'll refer to questions that the board has and the public.
Maybe throw that chair back again. There we go. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. Hi, everyone. My name is, is this, is this good? My name is Casey Oui. I'm a transportation planner at Howard Stein-Hudson, and I'm with Paul Nelson, the manager of transportation planning at our firm, and we're here to present the town's Complete Streets prioritization plan. So how many people in the room right now were present in the first public meeting in December? Perfect. So it's great to see you guys here tonight. I'm glad that you're able to make it, especially since you'll hear some of the projects that came from the first public meeting. For those that were able to attend, several months ago in December, as what Richard had said, we held our first public meeting to collect comments, project ideas, and issues from everyone that attended. And tonight, I'll be going over a general overview of what the Complete Streets funding program is, and then the results of the public meeting, as well as the results of the Wiki map tool that some of you may have taken part in. And then I'll go into some of the projects that are in the prioritization plan. So what are complete streets? They're streets that provide safe and accessible options for all road users of different ages and abilities. Improvements are intended to help everyone get around by walking, by biking, taking transit, and driving all in a way that's safe. There's a misconception that complete streets improvements are expensive, because you have to retrofit the entire roadway network. However, that's false. They are improvements that don't have to be implemented on all roadways. Successful complete streets are context-sensitive, and they're unique to different streets and neighborhoods. Complete streets improvements are also varied in size and cost. Larger and more expensive improvements may include projects like shared use paths. Small and more routine tasks such as restriping, sidewalk reconstruction, crosswalks, and ADA-compliant curb ramps are examples of inexpensive improvements that also can as complete streets. So the Massachusetts Complete Streets Funding Program that the town is taking part in now is through the Massachusetts Department of Transportation. It was started in February two thousand and sixteen, and it'll continue to provide assistance in the next couple of years through the state's capital investment plan funds. And as of today, at least thirty million has been awarded for construction funding. So in terms of the program's funding for assistance with a current prioritization plan, municipalities can be granted up to thirty-eight thousand dollars of reimbursable technical assistance. The town can also be granted up to four hundred thousand dollars of reimbursable funding towards construction funding. Two important things to remember is that this funding program does not fund design efforts, so projects need to be ready for construction by the time the town receives funding from MAST through this program. Another thing is that this program does not fund projects on state-owned roads. So within Norfolk, it's Route 1A and the roads surrounding the correctional facilities. Norfolk completed Tier One when their Complete Streets policy was approved in February two thousand and nineteen. The town is currently in the Tier Two phase, so developing the Complete Streets prioritization plan. And that's the document that we're helping the town with. So our firm's prioritization plan process is pretty comprehensive. We gather data to help guide our project list development. We look at existing reports, like the town's two thousand and seven master plan. We do our own data collection. We gather data through committee input, and that's through the Wiki map tool in the first public meeting. And once we've gathered all that data, we then work with the town to finalize a list of projects that will be in the prioritization plan. Then as a requirement for the program, we then prioritize the projects based on several criteria that I'll talk about later. So committee feedback is important to us, because it's something that we heavily consider when we create the project list. And the two ways that we gather committee input are through the Wiki map tool and the first public meeting. So the Wiki map tool is an interactive tool where residents can go online and share their ideas and issues regarding ADA, pedestrian, bicycle, transit, and driving issues within the town. And Norfolk's Wiki map had one hundred and ninety-one comments, which I think is a lot. And the distribution of those comments did vary. The highest percentage of comments were made by residents whose concerns were relating to vehicle safety. Pedestrian comments were forty-one percent of the total comments received in the Wiki map, followed by bicycle comments at eight percent, ADA at four percent, and then transit at two percent of the total comments shared on the Wiki map. So the top three concerns shared on the Wiki map were missing or obstructed sidewalks, high vehicular speeds, and traffic safety, as both relate to pedestrian and bicyclist safety. High vehicular speeds concerns were in relation to cars speeding through corridors, making crossing, walking, and biking conditions very dangerous for pedestrians and cyclists. Many residents also want speed limits to be enforced, and they also want to see drivers slow down along local roads that are used as cut-through roads. The second top concern was missing or obstructed sidewalks that connect to destinations throughout the town. People identified Union Street as a potential corridor that would provide connections to town center from South Norfolk. Medway Branch was also stated as a corridor that could include a sidewalk connection from senior housing to other parts of the town. The third concern was traffic safety as it relates to intersection configurations that provide poor visibility, making it difficult for drivers to see pedestrians or see incoming traffic. So the first public meeting was held on December sixth, two thousand and eighteen. Comments that were heard were very similar to what we saw in the Wiki map. We heard that there were roads that were heavily used by pedestrians that need to be safer, such as the portion, such as the portion of Main Street that doesn't have sidewalks, Union Street, Rockwood Road, and Holbrook Road. ADA-friendly sidewalks and crosswalks were needed, particularly near Town Hall and Route one fifteen south of Main Street, where the crosswalks don't have ADA-compliant curb ramps and where sidewalks are pitted, making it unsafe for pedestrians to walk through. Roads such as Route one fifteen and local roads that are used as cut-through saw high vehicular speeds, creating a safety concern by residents. Residents also expressed some desire to designate particular roadways as bicycle routes, such as Seacock Street, Needham, and North Streets. And lastly, residents also raised the issue regarding intersections that are designed in a way that gives poor visibility to incoming vehicles and pedestrians and cyclists. So the Wiki map and public meeting were the last steps in our data gathering before drafting our project list. And once we summarized and looked at all the existing data, we started a draft list of projects. And some of the sources that we referred back to when we were drafting this project list were the comments received during the public meeting, the Wiki map comments that we saw, some of the town priorities, our own existing conditions analysis, as well as some published reports. So once the draft project list was seen, was created, seen, and given the green light by the town, we went forward and ranked projects based on several criteria that I'll talk about next. This prioritization process essentially ranks the projects based on how well it scores in the individual criteria. So our criteria includes whether the project provides a network connection to bike-pedestrian networks. We also look at the level of biking and walking demand of the roadway that the project, that the potential project is located on. We also look at biking pedestrian crashes that are adjacent to the projects. And if the project is an improvement to the bicycle or pedestrian network, we look at the existing potential level of comfort that the project would bring and score accordingly. We consider how demanding the projects are based on how often it was discussed during the public meeting, how often we saw it on the Wiki map, and town official feedback. We scored based on the project's half-mile proximity to schools, quarter-mile proximity to assisted-living facilities and senior housing, as well as the project's adjacency to disabled populations. So at the end of the prioritization, each project receives a final score that determines its ranking in the prioritization plan. So after we completed the prioritization process and gave each project a rank number, the projects are then copied over to MAST's prioritization plan, which looks very similar to what you may or may not be able to see on the screen. I'm just going to read some of the main columns, since it's probably very hard to see on the projector. So the prioritization plan for this Tier Two document includes the ranking number, the project name and description, the project limits, as well as what Complete Streets needs... the project name and description, the project limits, as well as what Complete Streets needs project fulfills. So to go over the projects, some of the projects that are currently in the prioritization plan, there are projects that vary. We have pedestrian and ADA-conditioned projects. We have projects that improve bicycling conditions and vehicle operations as it relates to pedestrian bicyclist safety. It's good to know that Norfolk's Complete Streets project list is comprehensive. There are a great number of projects on there, and so you'll see some of these projects be constructed in the next five or so years. And you'll see some that are going to be way out in the next ten or fifteen years. It's comprehensive. It's supposed to be the town's Complete Streets master plan. And so to go over some of those, in the prioritization plan, we have included bicycle route designation along several corridors that the town had identified in the first public meeting. We also included a shared use path along the former Pondville Railway that runs northeast from the Rantham border to the Walpole border and the former Medway Branch well road in the northwest section of the town. So to reiterate what I just said, the bicycle route designation will be along Secong Street, Needham Street, and Everett, sorry, and North Street. And bicycle route designation will give awareness to drivers that those corridors should be shared with other users of the roads, such as cyclists. Other types of projects, like bicycle lanes, were not feasible due to the narrow configuration of the roadway. So we also have shared road signage along Miller Street to affirm pedestrian and cyclist's rights to the road. So moving on to projects relating to pedestrian mobility and ADA accessibility, projects on the list include sidewalk construction and reconstruction. Several locations in the town, we have crossing improvements that include ADA-compliant curb ramps and the shared use paths that I had just mentioned. So Norfolk's prioritization plan includes a great number of sidewalk construction and reconstruction throughout the town. They're mostly along roadways that are adjacent to visited destinations. Sidewalk reconstruction includes widening the sidewalks where there's space and fixing rough spots on the pavement that would make it dangerous for residents to walk through. We also included speed feedback signs near school zones to provide awareness to drivers of their speeds and let them know that they need to slow down so that it's a safer environment for children and parents to walk through. And another pedestrian mobility improvement project are the shared use paths along Medway Branch and Pondville, the previous Pondville Railway. So two intersection improvements in the town include roundabouts at two intersections, Needham Street, North Street, and Pond Street. We also have one on Everett Street and Route one fifteen. The roundabout on Everett Street and Route one fifteen should be explored further for feasibility before submitting the project for funding.
Was there a reason why? I'm sorry, interrupt. Was there a reason why that was identified as something that requires more research?
Yeah, so because we looked at it in a very, in a top-down view. We didn't really do any kind of ADT study or speed study, which are two requirements to make the case for roundabouts.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Can I have a follow-up on that?
Mm-hmm.
Is there data that suggests that roundabouts are more efficient than stoplights?
There is. Paul, would you have anything to add to that?
Sure. Is it okay if I speak into this? So roundabouts, just like signals, are a tool that can be really helpful at an intersection. We're suggesting a roundabout can be more efficient if it's the right mix of turning versus through volumes. So I think that the roundabout carried also some speed. The one good thing about roundabouts, too, is that since everyone has to stop for it and change direction, you tend to help manage speeds through the corridor as well. That's why we kind of suggested taking a look at it. But, you know, the amount of effort for this town-wide Complete Streets plan doesn't really allow us to get into like the detailed analysis and engineering of a roundabout and intersection project. So we're kind of identifying it as a potential improvement, but would suggest that, you know, additional work be done to make sure it's the right thing. Because you don't want to create, you don't want to improve safety and create other issues tied to congestion or cause more cut-through traffic or something like that. But the short answer to your question is roundabouts can be more efficient than signals.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So before I conclude the presentation, a few key points. Just because we prioritize the projects in the prioritization plan, it doesn't necessarily mean that the town has to go through and construct things in the order of the list. Mass GOT wants to make sure that this process works with municipal timelines and deadlines. So if there's an opportunity to do a pavement project or a sidewalk construction project that's ranked number thirty-nine on the list, the town can jump down to project thirty-nine and skip projects one to thirty-eight if they need to. As mentioned before, if projects that are submitted require any design effort, it has to be covered through a different funding source, and it should be done before that project is applied for the Tier Three construction funding phase, since projects have to be construction-ready by the time the town receives the money from Mass GOT. And lastly, once the town receives the funding to construct the first-year projects, those projects need to be constructed within a year of when the money is granted to the town. The town can apply for an extension, but the most important thing to remember is that projects need to be done before the town can apply for more funding for their second set of projects through this Complete Streets Funding Program. So that concludes the prioritization plan PowerPoint for the town's Tier Two document. If there are any questions, we can take them now.
Please, no, go ahead. Grab the microphone. It's for the folks at home on cable, not so much here.
My name's Jennifer. I live near Everett, or on Everett, near that intersection. I guess I'm voicing more my concern than anything, because I think you have answered some of the questions. My main question is kind of why it's so low on the priority list? Because in our experience, it's a big safety issue.
Mm-hmm.
A little bit different than the rest of the town, because we have semi-trucks between Route one and one A.
Right.
And there's a speed issue going down one fifteen. So the amount of speed and the amount of weight those vehicles are carrying, I don't know, when you do prioritize, are you also looking at like history of accidents? Because I didn't see that listed there.
Yeah, so we do look at crashes, but there were no crashes between two thousand eleven to two thousand fifteen on Everett and Route one fifteen. We look at the project's adjacency to destinations. And so because it's more than a mile away from the town center where the cluster of destination points are, it ranked very low there. And the level of comfort, the bicycle level of comfort and pedestrian level of comfort were also low because we base it on existing, for the pedestrian level of comfort, we base it on existing pedestrian facilities. So if there aren't any there, it also receives a low score.
I can understand the pedestrian. I think I'm just speaking to the vehicles that are there. So my question then is, in the interim, if that's not one of the projects that are addressed in the next couple of years,
Mm-hmm.
can some minor things happen, like a speed feedback sign? There was one there, I think, a year and a half ago.
Yeah.
It helped tremendously, and then we were told, you know, there was no money to keep it there. So we only had it there, I think, a month or something. That is hu, it was a huge help, and I'm thinking it's such a simple solution.
Yeah, yeah. No, I just, yeah, I totally get that. And we're working on finalizing the project list for the prioritization plan. And we are looking at speed feedback signs for Everett and Route one fifteen as an incoming project that we can implement now as opposed to later. I think the more long-term project that we had on there was a roundabout, which would not happen in the next couple of years, because it requires some studies. But speed feedback signs can be done immediately.
And those studies require more funding from the state? Is that?
The, so the studies would require funding, but it wouldn't be, the funding wouldn't come from this program.
Right. Okay. I had just one more question. There were some projects that are not, that were not within the ranking or not applicable? Do those get prioritized later on?
Which ones are they?
In that, you had this, that Excel sheet?
Oh, yes.
And there's projects beyond that, that are like beyond ranking nineteen? Or do those eventually get prioritized?
Yeah, so we did, projects, I think you are probably looking at one that has town rankings and then rankings on the far left. So the ones that have NA under town ranking, they were just projects that were prioritized by the town. But we still prioritize them on our end, so it should have a number associated with them.
Rich, could you talk about, when she says the town, who gave feedback on that?
Yeah, so it was primarily through DPW Department that we sat down and reviewed these projects. Just one addition to that. So one of the things that we did discuss is that, as you look through the priority projects and the amount of projects, there's an amount of money that for all those projects would add up to. So we talked, we did talk about that. We want to identify all the projects, but we don't want to set maybe false expectations that we can get all these things done. So it's kind of a, you know, give and take, do we include them or do we lop them off? So we're in that in-between state where we talked about leaving them on there. And as time changes, they might move up potentially. But I don't want to falsely promise that that's going to jump up ahead of something else. So, you know, that's part of the discussion, because as Casey was talking about, the funding through the state for the Tier Three is construction money. Some of the things that are identified in that plan will need hard design, survey, traffic data. So there's a lot of, behind the scenes, there's a lot more costs associated with them that would have to be funded through the town to do that. There's not money for that through the state for the design aspect of it, but.
Just say one more thing then. I'm sorry, were you done?
Sure.
Just as a resident, we had provided some video that showed what happens when four cars come to that intersection, and it is very confusing, the potential. I'm home a lot. I hear screeching brakes a lot. We have heard accidents happen. And our neighbor was closely involved in one as the car's speeding toward his driveway. So I just plead with you to kind of maybe relook at that one. I just have to say it. It's on my heart.
Betsy Whitney Valley Street. Has there been much attention spent on studying one-way streets? Is that a concept?
So it is a concept, and it's not something that we can designate through this program that requires studies and changing some regulations that we can't do through this, because, through this program, since this program is strictly construction funding.
So you wouldn't be in the position of making recommendations?
Not, not through this program, unfortunately, yeah.
David Rosenberg, North Street. So I have a question about funding. I understand that all the design and studies need to be funded separately from this program. Is a hundred percent of the construction funded through this program? Or is there some mandatory contribution to the construction from some other sources?
So, can you repeat that question again? Sorry.
For the construction phase, will the program pay a hundred percent of the construction? Or does other funding need to be made available from somewhere else to contribute to construction?
Right. So a couple of things. So the town, so Mass GOT will fund up to four hundred thousand dollars of construction funding. So if the project is, or the set of projects are less than four hundred thousand dollars, there is a possibility that they'll fund the full amount of the projects. This past round, because it was so competitive, a lot of the towns that received Tier Three funding only had partial funding. It just depends during the submission and how many towns submit for Tier Three construction funding for the different rounds.
So if the town applies for Tier Three funding?
Yeah.
And partial funding is granted, does that obligate the town to pay for the remainder? Or, I mean, can the town say, no, we don't want to do it if you're only going to pay half of it or something?
Right. So the town, so Mass GOT will usually pay by project. So for the project that they provide funding for, that the town is expected to construct, they're never going to partially fund one project, if that makes any sense. Because sometimes the town can apply for three different projects in the Tier Three phase. And the town may only receive funding for two of those three projects. So for that one project that the town didn't receive funding for, they do not have to construct it or find a funding source to construct that project. But they are expected to construct those two projects that they receive funding for.
But they will receive full funding for those two projects?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name is Catherine Cale. I live on Pond Street in Norfolk. And first of all, I'm very happy to see the emphasis on ADA accessibility. My daughter uses a wheelchair, and I go up and down Pond Street with her to North Street. And it is, parts of it are really, really bad, including what's in the center of town. So I'm really happy about that. But I have a sort of like a, I guess, procedural question. On the prioritization plan, it mentions something about accessibility issues between the roundabout in the center of town and Kilpatrick Street. And Kilpatrick down to Secong on North Street is really bad in a lot of places. So I wondered how I can mention that, or will someone notice that? Because they really are, that's where there are some really high curbs and some pitted sidewalks and driveways that are not specifically mentioned in the plan.
So which, what area of the town is, so it's Kilpatrick, Wickham, Secong?
Let's see, on North Street from the center of town
Mm-hmm.
down to Secong Street, okay? That intersection where the roundabout is going to be, is planned or whatever. Kilpatrick is about halfway down that section of North Street. And I think there is still quite a bit of really rough terrain for walkers and wheelchair users from Kilpatrick down to Secong Street. And I wondered what to do with that information, I guess, is basically what I'm asking.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's good to share with the town, because it can be, you know, it's good to, for them to identify these ADA pedestrian issues. For the prioritization plan itself, we did look at projects that did receive a lot of concerns and a lot of comments. And so not all of the projects that were presented in the WikiMap tool were created or formed into a project, because it would have been hundreds of projects. And we are, we can only narrow it to a certain extent, but that's feasible. So, yeah, that does not, yeah. We did try to look at major roads that are heavily traveled by different neighborhoods, but not so much of the local residential roads.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. McGee, DPW Director.
Thanks.
Welcome.
Bob McGee, Director of Public Works. I'm feeling a little bit useless here if I don't say something. And I hate to see you come out of your house when I might have some answers that would make, comfort you a little bit more. All of yous actually, that's you as well. But the Everett Street Route one fifteen situation is, just can't wait for a grant. It can't wait for a roundabout. I don't think. If it, if, in the meantime, we can, we've priced, and I've mentioned it to the board before, but we just ran out of money. I'm hoping to do it this year. But you're right about the reflect signal. But you're right about the reflect signals, the flashing lights that will go on and if you're speeding and so forth. I hope it will calm the traffic coming down Needham Street because that intersection is one of the worst. If there isn't a lot of accidents there, the accidents that do happen are deathly. So there's a, a fender bender's the one thing, you, you can get out of your car and go home. But there's some, the speeds coming down there with that, with those trucks, you're a hundred percent right. And I hope that we can do something this year with those signals, Jim, because with some small funding, we can, for under $10,000 or even under $15,000, we can put a couple of lights queuing the traffic to slow down, you know, the flashing beacons that will reflect your speed. And we've gone through Ocean State, is it, to price those. So somewhere this spring, I'd like to be presenting you with some, some options for that intersection.
You have some Chapter 90 money left over, don't you?
Almost negative.
That's a no then.
You know, after we reimburse ourselves, no, there's just, there isn't, there isn't much right now.
And this would cost about ten or fifteen grand?
Each, each pedestal, right. It's mostly coming down the hill. You know, everybody knows the situation.
I know, and I remember when you had them there, and it did make a difference. And I, believe me, we know the history of Everett Street. And it is, it is a tough, tough road, yeah. Especially during concerts and, I mean, all kinds of issues for Everett Street, yeah.
Again, just, you know, the roundabout's probably the best solution for everything. To me, it's the greatest thing, better than traffic lights, no maintenance. It's pleasant to see.
That's true.
And it's, you know, it has hardscape to it and so forth, but that's the answer to that. If you remember a couple of years ago, just two years ago, we paved from the roundabout at Liberty Lane, or just short of that, down to some 1,400 feet on Route 115.
Right.
And that's where we ran out of money. So you probably remember us doing that. We lifted the sidewalk, made those improvements. And the plan is to go all the way down to the proposed roundabout where we have now conceptual drawings, Needham at North Street. So that project there, again, I'll be before you begging for money as usual. Chapter 90 probably being the source of the, the funding. But if you're coming up from Needham Street, coming inbound to the town on the left-hand side, there is, we have more property on that side. It's very well-treed and there's, the elevations go up and there's stone wall there. My proposal is that we remove some of the trees, take down that grade, use the existing stone, and put it back with some craftsmanship. And it'll act as a retainer wall in some areas, widening the road there. But the biggest, the biggest savior for that street is going to be the roundabout. Like I said, we have a conceptual drawing and I have proposed costs for a roundabout at Needham at North. If the, if the grant comes before us, wonderful, just wonderful, the work you're doing is great. But, but if you come up Route 115 from, say, Dedham Street, the speeds are up to 50 miles an hour. You go by Pond Street Rec and there's really not a lot of residents there until you get to Needham Street. And from Needham Street to the center of town, it turns into a neighborhood. The houses are closer together. And the work that we've done has shown, you know, the people, it's, it's closer because the people can now walk to the center of town without having to get into their car. So that's what's, that's, I'm hoping that you'll see that in the next few years, some activity down there. And to, and I don't know if I want to go out on a limb here, but to Betsy's question is, and I don't know if you were talking about Valley Street, but I was thinking that Valley Street is a great candidate for a one-way. I don't know if you feel that way. Oh, good, good.
Depends which way she's going.
She doesn't care. But anyways, that, Valley Street's a great cut through for the, for the employees getting out of the prison system. They go down there, they come down Valley Street and that's where they throw their cups out. I mean, it's, sometimes it's incredible. If it wasn't for Betsy, it'd be worse. But I hope that answers, you know, some of your concerns. You come out, I just wanted to go in there. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob, as always.
So just to summarize, long story short there, you know, we have some things that are dedicated to this funding project, this process that we're going through. But it doesn't limit us to what we can do in town. There's still the availability for us to be able to make these improvements outside of this specific scope.
Yep.
Rich, what are the next steps?
So next steps, just a few more details will be put into the plan, some cost estimate, I think.
Yeah.
And once that's complete, it'll be submitted to MassDOT, which we have to get into then by April 1st. And then, once we're done in that phase, then we can turn towards, I think, May, or is it the time?
May, yep.
When applications open up for tier three funding. So we could start to be, between now and then, we can start to think about potential things that we might want to consider submitting, so.
And how does that process work? How do we discuss that? Who would vote that? How would that be decided?
Free question?
You said it has to be submitted by April 1st?
No, the plan does, the plan, the prioritization plan, yeah.
Prioritization is by when?
April 1st.
Prioritization.
Correct.
So I'm just going to add on to what you said.
Okay.
Yeah, so the priorities, prioritization plan is due April 1st. And it takes a couple of weeks for Mass DOT to approve the prioritization plans. But while, during the approval process, it's advised that the town does start working the tier three documents for the projects that they predict they'll be applying for, for construction funding. Because May 1st is the deadline for the tier three funding applications.
So to answer your question, Kevin, I think we're going to be, have to do some simultaneous activity here, you know? Getting the plan in and start already, we probably should start thinking about it right now. And then kind of have a discussion about what those projects.
And I think you'll have a clearer picture once you see the projects with the cost estimates. Because then you can prioritize based on what you can, what the town can afford to construct in this upcoming funding round for the next year.
Two-part question on this, Rich. Who is the authorizing party to prioritize that? And that's a different answer, I suspect, than who are the right people to prioritize that.
We actually kind of talked about this a little bit. The prioritization plan comes from the town.
Right, which we've done to a certain degree.
Certain degree.
So, so now to facilitate a decision from this process.
I would think it'd be working with DPW would be my.
I would too. That's my point.
Starting point from there.
Okay, so.
And then.
So logically, we would say that you as the planner and Bob as the DPW director, and jump in, Kevin, I mean, because you've been working with Bob on this. I would think that you would be the, the folks to at least set the bar as to where we begin with this. Because you certainly are much closer, much more knowledgeable in this process. So then, let's say you do that. Because April 1st, we're just about, we're just about there. So if you were to bring that collective wisdom, where does that go next? Can you be empowered to make that decision? Does it have to come back to this board? Because we don't have another meeting until April 2nd.
Right.
Now, we can schedule one, you know, but we want, we don't want to miss this deadline, is the point, Rich. So how, how do we make sure this happens and the right people get involved to make sure we don't miss this?
Well, without going out on a limb, but perhaps I will a little bit.
Feel free.
I think we, we could, so May 1st, oh no, May 3rd?
May 1st, or the, the first Monday of May, I need to double check exactly.
That's May 6th, I think.
Right, because election is May 6th.
Because election's May 7th. That's a Tuesday.
That's correct.
So it's May 6th, it's the first Monday in May.
May 6th, so that is when the tier three application is due. The April 1st deadline is for the tier two document, which that we've been working on, the town and HSH. And that's close to being final, we're just making minor changes based on feedback from DPW.
That has to list the prioritization. Is that, is that not a list of, did I misunderstand that?
Yeah.
It does, okay.
But we don't have to submit by order of prioritization.
No, we don't.
We're not bound to that.
No, correct. So we're, I mean, in all reality, we're going to probably look, and I know DPW, I'm sure is going to look at stuff that is a light lift, you know, that we don't need to get into heavy lift to be able to submit it and get it funded. So that may be something that's, can't think of anything.
So then, let's see, maybe I'm interpreting. So you folks could put together that list for April 1st. And it can be as broad as you seem, as you deem appropriate. And then we have till May 6th to fine tune that list to submit for projects? Is that, am I saying this correctly?
Construction funding, yeah.
Okay. So the first list is a catch-all, the second list is the finite list that we're actually going to seek funding for.
Yeah, for the first round of construction.
Well, that makes it a little easier.
That has to be less than, equal or less than $400,000.
We don't have to drill down on the April 1st list. We need to drill down on the May 6th list.
On the tier three deadline list.
Yeah.
It's not the immediate crisis, I thought, okay.
So anyways, I could tell you that myself, through Barry and Rich, they've put this list together. And I got to admit, I haven't paid a great amount of time to it, I've been busy with other things, but they've been working with it. And I don't know, did you see the list, you, Kevin, see the list before today?
Yes.
Because you could chime in too, if you want, if there's something that you see, if there's, you know, if you want to just do a little workshop on the side, but.
Yeah, I think that sounds great.
Yeah, I just, you are far better positioned to, to speak to these, I mean, and I'm speaking for me. Now, I, now Kevin has been working with you on this. But from my perspective, as far as I'm concerned, you, you are far better positioned to have a better understanding of where these lists should start.
You're right, absolutely.
So is it, is it safe to say that you, you can compile that larger list, or whatever that might be? April 2nd now might work, if you can get it in April 1st, and then we can start the process April 2nd to drill down a little bit deeper and work with you folks to come up with a more defined list to get in by May 6th?
Jim, the, the key here is, is we have to look at projects that we don't need to design for. So we're looking at maybe the, the bike signage projects.
And there's a cost to all of that.
Yeah, but we're looking at the low-hanging fruit, maybe the stuff where we have to move a few stop signs, do some stop R painting. That's easy stuff that we can take care of without having to get into design and forking over the money to do that before we actually do it. So there are several projects in there that we've already discussed that we could probably get done in the chair.
Our blinking lights on Everett Street.
Yeah, so just, just to, just to supplement what Barry said, we're, the prioritization plan is the master list. We'll get that into the state. And then the tier three funding will go off that list and we'll select the things that are low-hanging fruit that we know, we don't need to get heavy design that are fundable. And it could be something that's maybe 11th on that list. I mean, obviously it's not going to be number one based on our priorities.
I think the key component there is that the list is already built. We have the big master list already. There's a little bit of tweaking that needs to be done, but there's nothing that requires the insight or input anymore. That's all been done already. What's going to require the insight and input moving forward is going to be the next deadline in May. That's the next time that we really need to have something put together more defined.
So we, we do have time to, we can conference and then come back and say, okay, this is what we're thinking about submitting on April 2nd. So there's still time to, if we.
Well, to Kevin's point, I think you're fairly well along on that.
Right.
I don't think that that's, now that I think we have clarity, that's not a heavy lift, so. But we've got three meetings in April. And let's not wait to the last, which is April 30th. So let, let's be sure that we plug this in as early as possible. I mean, if we can start that dialogue on the 2nd and have it again on the 17th or whatever that date is of our next meeting, I just don't want to miss the opportunity to get any of these in.
I agree, I agree.
Great. Any other comments or questions? Okay.
Thank you very much, Casey.
Thank you all very much, thank you. Rich, thank you. No, thank you very much. Hi, Mr. McGee, you're here for the, you're here till next Tuesday, I think. We are a little late on the next agenda item, which is a public water rates hearing. I believe we're opening the water rates hearing this evening. So if you would, sir, like to read our public hearing notice.
Will do.
Thank you.
The Board of Selectmen, Licensing Board for the Town of Norfolk will conduct a public hearing under the provisions of Chapter 101 of the Acts of 2004, Section 7, to determine the water budget for full year 20 and set prices and rates for usage of the water system. This hearing will be conducted on Tuesday, March 19th, 2019, at 7:00 PM in Room 124, Town Hall, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass. 02056.
Welcome. Nice to have you again, how are you?
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you as well. You may, sir.
We had to talk about the water rates, maybe a little update on our new source development. But the water rates, more importantly, they do relate, react, I mean, relate because one needs to pay for the other. But as you know, just a brief history, it has, it's been five years ago since we've had the rates increased. You know, and at that time, it was a tough time for the water, our water system, because we had numerous leaks to the percentage of around 50 at one point. We didn't have much money in our reserve funds, I think it was like around $50,000. It was a dangerous time to be running a water division. So what we did was, against Doug's advice, we didn't raise the water rates. We were trying to compete with other towns, I think, more importantly. But we were, but what I was trying to do was, and with the help of Al, Al's our foreman in the audience here, is reduce these water, the leaks that we had. So the first thing that we did was we went out and we, we identified all the leaks. And in two short years, we got it down to about 15%, where today we're closer to five, consistently under 10, would you say? Which, if you survey that around, we're, we're in really good shape as far as leaks go. We've also, we didn't take on any projects that we should do for a water system that needs to, with so many moving parts, you're always upgrading water. There's many programs that we have really, not ignored, but just put off for a little bit to build those reserve funds. And we got the reserve funds up to over a million dollars. At the same time, buying trucks when we needed them. And so at this time, I think it's unavoidable that we need to raise the rates for water. So that, I'm not going to say too much more about it because I'll, you'll think I'll be selling you. Doug is a statistician here and an expert in the field for so many years that I'd like to just turn it over to him if he can, if you don't mind. Doug, if you could take it from there.
Thank you, I know it's been some time since I've presented before you. But as always, I'll keep my presentation pretty straightforward, simple talk. If you have a question, feel free to ask anytime. I like a nice, open meeting and open dialogue. So when we completed the rate study this year, we completed what I call a full and complete rate study with a cost of service study included as well. So we looked at your entire budget, we looked at what your capital is going to be. We looked at your future, both your future capital needs and your future debt service. When is debt service going to start to drop off, so we can add new projects there? We look at what the base charge should be for each customer, or also known as a minimum charge. Three or four different terms for that, that service that is provided. So it was a complete and, complete, for lack of a better term, physical of your, of your water system. So we looked at, we looked at revenues, we looked at collections, we looked at the frequency of the billing, so complete, complete analysis. And what we've, what we're here to present tonight are our results. One of the, one of the things that jumped out at us when we completed the rate study is that your minimum charge, which is currently at $50 every six months. So you bill, you bill customers every six months. And there is a $50 semi-annual service charge, base charge, minimum charge for that service. And what that $50 is for is there are ongoing costs, fixed costs, to the water department, irregardless, or regardless of whether anybody uses any water or not. And so it costs money to read the meter, costs money to generate the bill, costs money to mail the bill, costs money to collect the bill, costs money to chase people down who don't pay their bill. There are lean costs, there are, and other fixed costs that are personnel-driven, to some extent, expense-driven. So those all, those costs need to be incorporated through the minimum charge. And the cost of it, the cost of service study resulted in that you're not charging enough or you're not recouping what it's actually costing you for that minimum charge. So we're recommending that the minimum charge increase slowly over the next three or four years. And we want to go from, presently it's at $100 per year, $50 every six months. And we're recommending that you eventually climb to $150 per year.
Excuse me, I apologize.
No problem. If you need a minute, just let me.
No, no. No, no, I'll, I'll need several days, so we'll, just a cold, thank you.
So we're recommending a slow increase to the minimum charge over the next few years. And what this will do is provide the water department with guaranteed revenue. And your minimum charge is currently based on meter size, and that's based on American Waterworks standards. So the larger the meter, the larger the cost. And the reason being is, a larger meter can flow a tremendous amount of water over and above what a standard 5/8 by 3/4 inch meter can flow. And when the meter has the ability to flow more water, you need to have larger pipes in the ground, you need to have additional sources of supply, you need to have additional personnel, et cetera, et cetera. So those who place the demand on your system should pay a higher charge. Your current system is set up that way, we're recommending that you continue with that. And at, just as the residential meters are going to increase slightly over the next few years, the larger meters will increase as well. The second component of the water, of the water rates are what's known as the consumption rates, or the flow rates. And you have what is known as a four-step increasing block rate, also known as a conservation rate. And the premise being, the more you use, the more you pay. This has been a rates, a rate structure that's been in place for probably close to 20 years here in Norfolk. We're recommending that the, the amount of flow in each step not change, but because the rates haven't been raised in five or six years, it's time that we make an adjustment to the flow rate. And the flow rates are gonna pay for the operation and maintenance costs of the department. It'll pay for some of the, the existing debt service. But what it will not pay for is that there is a new bond that's gonna be starting in fiscal '20. That's $2.8 million, that's for the, the new well, or the new source site. So there were a couple different ways we could go about paying for that bond. It's been my experience, and it's worked very well with other communities, that instead of just lumping whatever that bond is gonna cost you into the rate, and have that just be part of the rate as time goes, as time goes on, well, at some point, that bond gets paid off. And you never see that the rate is gonna go down when that bond is paid off. What you see is, you just add more cost to it and you keep moving forward. What we've discovered and what's worked, as I've mentioned, what's worked well in the past is that you have a separate fee, known as a capital improvement fee, for that new bond. In all likelihood, that bond will be a declining bond, so that the principal generally remains fixed, and the interest decreases over the, each year of, the, each, each year over the 20 years, until the interest is, until the bond is paid. So what we're recommending is that, that $2.6 million bond is gonna have an impact on the rate of a dollar and 45 cents per 1,000 cubic feet in fiscal '20, the first year of the bond. But in fiscal '21, it'll have a $1.41 impact on the rate. So it's actually gonna start to decrease as the bond has started, as the bond has paid off. So instead of lumping it into the rate, just blending it in there and it stays forever, this will start to, it'll start to decrease as time goes on. It's also a great tool, because the customer can see what their rates are actually paying for. Instead of just having it lumped in and saying, well, you know, it pays for this, pays for this, pays for this, well, we know that that new well site of $2.6 million is costing me a dollar 45 per 1,000 gallons of water that I use. So we find that, you know, it's much more informative, leads to a better informed public and customer, which is beneficial to the town in so many different ways. So we're recommending, that's a little bit of a different change and a little different philosophy than we've, than we've recommended in the past. We're not recommending any changes to your private fire protection services. We feel those numbers are accurate, and they're in line with what other communities are paying as well, so we don't, we don't feel that, that should be, that should be adjusted. So what does all that mean that I've just talked, talked about? As I mentioned earlier, the current minimum charge for 5/8 inch meter, and that's what most customers are gonna have, most residential customers are gonna have in their homes. They currently pay $50 every six months. We're recommending in fiscal 2020, so the next fiscal year, that that amount increase from 50 to $60. So $10 every six months, $20 per year. We're recommending that the larger meters increase as well, pretty much at a proportional rate. So each, everybody will be going up by the same percentage point, by the same percentage amount, depending on your meter size. As I mentioned earlier, the second component of the rates are the flow rates, and we're recommending somewhat of a hefty increase to, to those rates. For the lowest consumers, those who use between 1 and 15,000 gallons every six months, we're recommending about an 11% increase to that flow rate. So the amount will increase by 61 cents per 100 cu, uh, per 1,000 gallons, excuse me, for that first step. The second step, for all consumption between 15,001 and 35,000 gallons, we're recommending a 12% increase, that's about an 84 cent increase per 1,000 gallons. Step three, which is for, from all consumption between 35 and 50,000 every six months, we're recommending a 21% increase. And for all consumption over 50,000, we're recommending a 24% increase. So the more you use, the more you're gonna pay. The rates are structured in a fair and equitable manner, everybody, whether you're a commercial account, or an industrial account, or residential account, you're gonna pay the same for your water. And it will be based on your consumption, so there aren't special rates for one customer over another. So those who use the least amount of water, and traditionally, those who use the least amount of water are the ones who can least afford to pay for it, will see the smallest increases. But everybody's gonna share in the rate increase that we're recommending. And that's because your costs are going up, the rates haven't been adjusted in a number of years, and, and we need to strengthen the enterprise fund. You have a lot of, you have a tremendous amount of capital improvements that are gonna be coming up, not only in the next two or three years, but coming up in the next five to 10 years. We need to strengthen those reserves, so that as we build the reserves and projects come up, we can pay, we can use the reserves to pay for those projects, so we don't have to go out and bond. Whenever you bond, you're adding about twice the cost to the project. So if you, if you can spend $500,000 and pay for it with your reserves, it's saving you $500,000 if you don't have to bond it. And when you find that blend between, what do we need to bond, those would be the larger projects, what can we pay for out of the rates, and what can we pay for out of the reserves? When you find that right mix, that ultimately is gonna lead to having the most manageable and the lowest rates possible. Debt is a killer. And one of the reasons that the rates are high here in Norfolk is because you've always had a lot of debt. You're a newer system, as new neighborhoods would come in, you'd have to lay a lot of new pipe, you'd have to develop new sources, that's all debt. It all costs tremendous amount of money, and results in higher rates. So we're, we, we took a long-term look at where the rates are headed, where the projects are headed, and we're trying to lay the foundation so that we can minimize rate increases in the future, and by finding that blend of rates, debt, and reserves. I'd also like that we recommend that, the cost of water is getting so high, not just here in town, but everywhere, that the days of raising rates every three or every five years, that's really over. Costs are increasing, capital is increasing. I'm a proponent of smaller increases more frequently. So if we can raise the rates 3% one year, 2% the next year, 3% the next year, you know, even though that increase may be 8%, it really yields more than 8%, 8% because you're compounding the increase. It's easier for the customer to pay, and it's easier to sell the rate increase, and it generates more revenue. It's gonna increase your reserves, which is ultimately gonna help keep the increases as low as possible. Okay, so we.
Can I ask a couple questions?
Yeah, of course. I know through a lot of information that you.
No, 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 it's fine, we've been, I think, it's Kevin's first year on the board, but I know we've.
Yeah, you will, you will.
We've been expecting this for some time, I mean, it's inevitable. But I'm gonna make the assumption that you have targeted some specific dollar reserve, and you've worked these numbers backwards to get there based on the various averages by each of these areas. Cause you've got significant increases in the higher end, and I understand the logic of it. But do you have, can, I've seen your capital improvement plan, so I, and I know that, oh, I forgot, is it 2.5 million, somewhere in that range?
It's missing a lot, I mean.
But the one you have, it's still like 2.5 million, if I remember.
Right, I threw some in as examples, like the water main looping and the, and the replacement of the transite piping and stuff like that.
So I'm, I'm assuming, just that, that you've taken what you anticipate to be the capital needs and worked that backwards to get these rates by the average consumption in each of these categories.
The capital needs and building the reserves as well.
Right.
I've set the reserves at 10%.
That's the question I was gonna ask, okay.
Of the O and M and the salaries combined.
Okay.
So about $100,000 a year.
Yep, alright.
Which is a lot of money, but it's not a lot of money.
No, that's, that's not.
When you compare it to the amount of money that needs to be spent. You also have to take into consideration that all the assets that are in the ground, they're uninsured.
Yeah.
So if, if there's some sort of catastrophic break, or if there's, you know, any kind of problem out there, we can't go to the insurance company to get the money, the reserves.
Well, we can, but they won't let us in.
Yeah, it is our funding source, so.
And two of our wells are quite old, so, you know, I mean, I know we have issues there.
Yeah, we've looked long-term as well as short-term.
I couldn't agree with you more, in terms of the capital improvement fee. I, I've seen that in other towns, I think that is a, I think that's a, I say this the wrong way, I mean, it, it's the best way, I think, to identify that, because you're 100% right. I've, I've seen it too often, where you embed costs of this nature into the rates, they never go away. No one's gonna reduce them. You see it all the time in the utilities. The utilities company does this routinely, where they, where they put in capital project ra, into the rates, and then they never go off the books, ever.
Right.
So this is a much fairer, more equitable way to do it.
I'd like to take credit for it, but I, I can't, I, I.
Yeah.
So somewhere else, and.
I think that's a great way to do it.
It's worked well in the other communities that I've recommended it.
I interrupted you in the thing, I apologize about that.
No, I didn't mean to interrupt.
I just wanted to be sure my assumptions were right on that, okay.
They are correct. And as I mentioned earlier, we're not only looking at the short-term, but we're looking at the long-term.
Yep.
And I think anytime you look at the rates, part of the underlying project has to be, you have to look at the strength of the enterprise fund. If you suddenly have a hole in your revenue for some unanticipated reason, you need to have that reserve. Or you have to go to the town and get the money from them, but.
Bob has been preaching us that for years, correctly so.
Yes, and we've come a long way over the years. As, as the director mentioned, we, at one point, we had very little in reserves. And you're walking a tightrope without a net underneath. Now we have a little bit of a net underneath, but we have much more in terms of capital needs, and your infrastructure's getting older, so we have to anticipate that there are gonna be problems as time goes on.
You have questions, sir?
You know, I did. Doug and Bob and Todd took the time to sit with me, actually, to go through a little bit of the history of where we are and how we got here versus the proposal and where we were going and why it was needed. So I'm good with this, up into where it is right now. I mean, like you'd said, it's never a, a great thing to have to increase fees that are passed on to residents, but in some cases, it's required to be able to keep up with the things that we need to do to keep things running as smoothly as they are.
Comments from the audience?
I have questions rather than comments. You mentioned that the rates were last increased five or six years ago. I wondered if you knew what the increase in the Consumer Price Index wa, is during, since the last time the rates were increased?
I do not.
Anybody?
Which index did you ask for?
Consumer Price Index, but basically, you know, what's happening? How does this increase compare with inflation during the same period, was the question.
My guess would, this is a.
It's 2%, let's just take 2%, just as a number.
Well, your costs are gonna increase by more than that.
I understand, but even at 2%.
Government regulations don't care about the Consumer Price Index, and what drives rates are the additional regulations put on by DEP and other regulatory agencies. And that's what drive, that's what also drives the cost, in addition to your capital and your other needs. You're also a small system, so you don't, you only, you have less than, what, 3,000 accounts?
27 to 3,000.
Yeah, so, let's just say 3,000 for simplicity's sake. We, we have to generate X number of dollars, and we only have 3,000 accounts. Whereas other communities might have 15,000 or 20,000 accounts, or even 10,000 accounts. So smaller systems almost always have higher rates.
I'm sorry, so, so you just now said that, in addition to, or augmenting the, the capital expenses, there are also expenses due to new regulations? Can you talk a little bit about what new regulations are costing us more money?
I don't have any specifics, I, I base the rates off the budgets, but there's the Safe Drinking Water Act assessment, which isn't all that new, but it's relatively new.
What, what is that requiring that we do, that we didn't do in the past, or are not doing now?
It's a fee that's paid to DEP, I believe.
That, that isn't anything that's driving what we're presenting here tonight. This has been going on, and it's just oversight by the DEP. It's accountability, it's safe drinking water, it's a pH count control. Al, is there anything, what else do they expect from us?
Several years ago, we're mandated to start adding chlorine. We've never had it before, so that's a chlorine, it's an expensive chemical, and in addition, the pumps, the tanks, et cetera, to add that chemical. These are the, the things that DEP puts on us.
I'm not an engineer, I'm an accountant, so I just crunch, I crunch the numbers. But it's well-known that there, there are always new regulations that, that are being imposed.
Let me jump into that question a little bit more, cause I, I agree, I don't think indexes have any bearing on this at all. We have an old system, we also have a system that wasn't well-planned when it started. It was an accommodating system. We, we went where development went, if you will. So we have all these spokes all over the center, all over town. And over the years, we've tried to loop these and connect them, and Bob's done a great job in trying to create that flow that works much more efficiently. When you have these dead-end systems, it's a nightmare. And we've had them all over town. So we've had to put in new meters, we've had, now we're looking into a new well. And these are very large expenses to the town. And, and what we're trying to do here is to ensure that we have the capital to continue to make the improvements, which Bob said earlier, have been really postponed. You know, we, we have been so focused on a new wall, well source, and getting a new opportunity in a new well online, which we're there now, pretty much. We have not been able to spend the money, because we had to divert this to the well considerations. We've already spent, what, over a million dollars, somewhere in that range? So we've had to divert it to that project, and we haven't been able to do some of the projects that we know need to get done. So this rate structure, as I understand it, is designed to give us the funding, cause he's 100% right. When you bond this and you fund all of this through debt, you're gonna pay twice as much, if not more, over, especially if it's over 10 years. You're, I mean, we have a history of doing this, all towns do, of adding layers of debt that cost us two and three times what we should be spending to get these projects done, so.
Debt accounts for more than 20% of your budget.
It's crazy.
And that doesn't include the new 2.3 million.
So this is an effort to try and fund these, what really are truly capital projects to improve the system as best we can, and it has to be done through some logical process over a number of years. It, it, it really makes a lot of sense to me. And it, it isn't driven by any single factor, it's driven by the needs of the water system.
The other question I wanted to ask is, you said that one of the.
The other question I wanted to ask is you said that one of the things that the minimum charge covers is debt collection from people who haven't paid their bills. And, you know, the cost of liens is one of the things you said. And I'm wondering why the people who pay their bills on time are needing to pay for the effort of collecting debts from people who don't pay. Why is that not entirely on the-
Maybe I said too much. But you don't, you don't have a collection problem. That's something we look at when we complete these studies. There's a very small percentage of the people that do have to go to lean and you do have to spend a little more time trying to collect the money. But the vast, vast majority of people, well over, well in the 90%, pay their bill on time. So your rates are not adversely, are not overinflated to account for people who don't pay their bill. You do not have that problem.
I understand that, I guess I was just-
I want to stress that.
Thank you. I was just, I was, I was trying to make the sort of policy point that the penalties for people who don't pay should cover the extra costs of collecting from them.
And they, they do pay. And, you know, interest is at the same rate as if you are delinquent on your property taxes, usually 14%.
That was one minor example. The people in Norfolk pay very well, no complaints. But, you know, just for a little bit of scale, they 50, 50, you know, we have people that pay like a couple thousand dollars a year for water, and some people that pay just a couple hundred dollars a year for water. The people that, that are paying a lot of the water, you know, with the irrigation systems in the summer and stuff like that, I'll talk out of two sides of my mouth. Yes, it does bring in money and revenue, because we're in the water business. But it also sucks down our wells. And you see people out there trying to drown out the sun to get a green grass and, and that's what they do. They water at the wrong time, totally uneducated by it, and they have the money, they don't care, they just water their lawn. But little things like the, and, and so those people, some of them, and I don't, I can't identify anybody, I don't have anybody to identify. They'll call up and they'll complain about the annual fee, the 50 dollars a year, after paying all the money that, for their usage. The thing that bothers them the most and where the complaints come is the 50 dollar base charge, which you talked about. So it's kind of funny how people think, but just as a, a point of scale, the 2,700 customers, 50 dollars annually brings in 135,000 dollars of revenue that pays for all the office help and all the things that the base charge really goes towards. So it, it's not a lot of money, it goes a long way, but it's kind of interesting to see where the questions come from.
My last question is, is there any possibility of getting out from under the chlorination requirement? I, I know that you and I have spoken about it.
There isn't. You know, Dave, we have two gravel pack wells. We have good, clean water wells. If there's any darkness or dirty water in our wells, it's because we don't have enough looping in our system. It gets trapped in the little, the, the laterals that go to hydrants and stuff like that. But the chlorination is a command from the DEP. I mean, I don't even think we need it, but we do and it's not going to change.
And, yeah, that, so in past discussions we've had, we've talked about-
Yeah.
How we can get the DEP to say, we have clean water now, we don't need chlorination anymore, and-
Yeah, we've argued it, and Whitewater's one of our consultants and they've carried the argument to the DEP and they wouldn't budge, so.
I wouldn't hold your breath for that.
Yeah. So I don't know if you'll see any towns. It'd be good, if you're interested, do a survey. I'd be interested to find out if anybody is without it.
Thank you.
I'd also like to mention that, I mentioned briefly at the beginning of the presentation that we looked at the frequency in which the bills are generated. Currently, you, you generate a bill every six months for your customers. I believe it's time that we need to bill more frequently than twice a year. So we've, we've recommended quarterly billing. And that will commence some point in fiscal '20. There's some changes going on at DEP in terms of personnel. So starting with the first, if we wanted to bill, starting, say, July 1st, might be a little too soon. But at some point during fiscal '20, or we could postpone it until fiscal '21, we really need to convert to quarterly billing, so.
Is that a cash flow issue?
I think it's a cash flow issue for some of your customers. Because the bills are starting to increase to the point where they're large bills for some customers, I just think it's easier if you, if you can pay a smaller bill four times a year than a large bill twice a year.
It's, it's not a cash flow in terms of, of the operational component.
You do not have a cash flow problem.
This is a convenience component for the customer, okay.
It is, and it's going to cost you a little bit more to generate four bills a year versus two, but not a significant amount. And to me, the true benefit of going to quarterly billing is if a customer has a leak, you're going to find that at least three months sooner.
That's a good point.
And, which is going to save money not only for the customer-
Yep.
But it's going to save money for the, for the town in lost water.
Good point.
And will help your unaccounted for water.
That makes sense.
So we would, I would like to see quarterly billing. I believe the director is in favor of that, we've spoken with-
We have no systems issues with that or any-
No, I spoke to your billing company and he said, no problem.
Okay.
So.
If there is a problem with us, Jim, right now is the turnover in the office. And there's some training, but, but I support this 100%. I think it's great.
Excuse me.
It's a pretty simple process to go from semi-annual to quarterly billing. Requires just a little more time to read the meters and a little more time to generate the bills. So I just wanted to let you know that's on our radar. And of course, we'd come to you before any decision, any final decision is made. And we would publicize it and let everybody know and expect that there would be more frequent bills. It's not going to cost the customer any more money. Because instead, we would have to adjust the, the base charge. So if it's 60 dollars every six months, it would become 30 dollars every quarter. Your first step rate, instead of 1 to 15,000, would be from 1 to 7,500. 7,500 to 17.5.
Right.
17.5 to 25 over 25. So the customer's not going to pay any more. And I believe that it would, it's easier to pay a quarterly bill-
I think it makes a lot of sense.
Than it is to pay, a lot of, a lot of communities are going to monthly bills. I'm not advocating that we go there, but let's, let's walk before we run.
I know Dennis's annual fee is 90 dollars every six months, so their annual fee's 100, their base fee's 180 dollars.
Yep, and, you know, base charges run the gamut in the, from low to high. But I would say most communities are between 75 to 200 dollars a year in terms of what their minimum charge is.
One of the interesting things that Doug had shared with me during our time together was a competitive analysis of what our neighboring towns do for their structure. And I think in just our small little area, among five towns, there was three or four different structures.
Yep.
So that was interesting to see.
Yeah, it's very difficult to compare rates from town to town. You're an enterprise fund, you do things the proper way. You're building your reserves, you fund capital. Other communities may be part of the general fund, so they have fewer expenses. They may not be funding their capital. They may pay their debt through the general fund and not through the rates. So when you start looking at what other towns charge compared to you, it's an apples to oranges comparison. I do a comprehensive analysis where I look at your costs, and that's really all I care about. What are your costs? What's your consumption? How much money do we need to generate? Those are the important items. You know, what Bellingham charges, what Franklin charges, doesn't matter.
Right.
Well, you've always done a thorough job in analysis of your force.
Great, thank you, appreciate that.
So I have another comment, if I may. I guess I'd like to say that as a water taker, I would prefer the continuation of semi-annual bills rather than quarterly bills. So that's common preference for continuation of semi-annual.
Is there a reason why? I'm just curious.
Sure, it's just less hassle. I mean, I, I, rather than having to deal with it, you know, more frequently, you know, the less frequently I have to think about it and pay it, the easier it is for me.
Understood.
And, and even though transactional charges are admittedly minimal, there are some transactional charges that I bear each time I do a transaction. The other thing I wanted to ask about though is you said that one advantage of quarterly bills would be earlier detection of leaks.
Yes.
And I'm, I am not sure why those are linked. I would hope that the leak detection can be affected by reading the water meters.
This is leaks within, within your home and with, after the meter. So if you have a toilet that's running, or if you've left an outside faucet on that you don't know about, if you have an irrigation system and there's a break in the irrigation system that you may not know about, the only way you're really going to find out, unless the water is coming to the surface, would be when the meter is read and you get a bill. If you're using 15,000 gallons every six months, and you get a bill for 100,000 gallons.
So.
That's going to tell you, you have a leak. If we bill more frequently, instead, you may still have the leak and you may still have the problem, but you're going to detect it much quicker.
In, in a conversation that I had with Bob, I don't know, a year or two ago, you told me that you could see when somebody's toilet was overflowing by seeing the water consumption. So I had the impression that there was, you know, real-time monitoring, not just monitoring when bills-
It is, but we got 2,700 customers, and I'm going to just, I'm going to defer to Al here because he might have a couple surprising stats that would be of interest.
I just had a situation happen this last two weeks. I won't give the address at all, but a young lady had to go to Ohio, her mother went ill, and I noticed that her water usage had increased every day. We went to her residence, we left her tickets, I called her home, I left her a message on the phone. We couldn't get ahold of her. In the last two and a half weeks, she used 52,000 gallons of water, went through a toilet. She arrived home this morning and turned the toilet off. That is one instance that's happened. I monitor this every day, I go into my office, I have critical reads that come into me. I try to remember them without snow plowing and everything else going on. And within two to three days, we try to make a phone call to that resident and let them know there's a problem. I had a church in town, had daycare. On a Sunday, they had daycare, or I should say on a Friday. On Monday, I came in and noticed they used 10,000 gallons of water over the weekend. I called the church, they went down into the basement to the furthest toilet in the basement and found the toilet running and wanted to know where the camera was I had in their basement. So that's just two instances that I can tell you, there are several though, that save people thousands of dollars. This woman here, her bill's going to be very high, and we can't abate that. That's beyond our control. We couldn't get into the house. It finally came down to me calling the police department and they just happened to have a phone number that reached her. And she's on her way back to Ohio as we speak, and she'll be coming back home and then asking me, what is my water bill going to be?
So, so I think that's great. I thank you for doing that. I would appreciate you doing it for me if I had that problem. But I also see that that doesn't, isn't related to the billing frequency at all. You're doing that not because a bill was issued, but you're doing that as, as a good service, so thank you.
Yes, it doesn't relate to the billing per se, you know. I think the billing is just to make it easier for those people that do have 2,000 dollar bills every six months. They, they won't have to pay that large sum, it'll be broken down to four payments rather than two, that's all.
That's a separate issue, but thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Next steps, Bob.
With regards to rates or, next on the agenda?
Rates.
Then the board will vote to approve the rates presented to them.
I'd like to see a motion be put forward.
The, the motion would come from the board.
Of course. Right, yeah. Do I have a motion? I have a question though in procedure. We're not showing that as an action item this evening. I know in the past, we've had the hearing and we've had the vote. I'm not sure how it was clarified on the agenda.
So I did look at the last year's agenda and copied it.
And this is the way it was presented last year?
As a hearing.
Okay.
Oh, and if I could interrupt, I'm sorry. The rates would be effective as of July 1st-
Right.
2019, so it really, you wouldn't, the first bill would go out in October of 19.
So we, we could put this on the April 2nd meeting- as an action item to vote the water rates. Is that acceptable to you, sir?
Absolutely.
Just to be sure we have the right procedure for this.
So that's good for you, Bob? Yeah, and if we're not going to vote on it tonight, then what I will do is I'll make my recommendation in writing so that you can re-
Yeah, I, I mean, I think we're both prepared to vote on this tonight. I, I just want to be sure that we don't, we follow the appropriate procedure in terms of that vote.
Yeah, let's be safe and sorry.
So we'll, we'll make it as an action item for vote on April 2nd. I don't think you need to provide us any more data.
Just send me an email.
I'll, I'll send you the recommendation, just like, like any contract, I'll send it to you and when you can recite right from it, it will be specific to the, to the increases.
Great.
Great.
Nice to see you again, thank you for your hard work.
I'll see you next year.
Thank you very much.
With better news next year.
So, Jim?
Thanks for your time.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
Thanks.
It may have not been because there was no increase.
You know I can't hear, so relate it, Kevin.
Last year.
Because there had been no increase, there probably was no vote needed to do anything.
No, we had, we had to vote to hold the rates.
Yeah, there's a vote every year.
We had to vote every year.
But that, that may be why it was put the way I saw it.
Oh, okay. Yeah, but we did vote to hold the rates. We have to establish the rates every year, even if they don't change. I just want to be sure we don't-
Absolutely.
Follow, that we follow the right order. It's no big deal, it's not until July 1st.
Barry, you can move to the Holbrook Street.
All right, Holbrook Street.
So I just, no, certain direction on this, just wanted to update you a little bit on where we are with water. New source, we've been in pursuit of the Holbrook Street well site approval for pumping. And just recently, if, I, I think you must know this, I'm hoping I copied you on some-
You did.
Some positive email from Susan Connors from the DEP-
Yep, you did.
That has approved the, the pump test at 400,000 gal, is it 400,000 gallons per day? Which is supplemental to what we've already have. So that doesn't mean, you know, when this well site goes on, that we can pump more combined every single day. It just means that we can rest some other wells and get some fresh water, and it prolongs the life of everything. It's just great to have another well, well on site. And so where we are with this, Jim, is that the, again, like I just mentioned, the pump, the pump test was approved at 400,000 gallons. Now we move forward. My understanding is, we bought the land, we have enough good feeling that the, the land purchase is a good thing to do. It would have been anyways. It would have been our circle of, of future water. If it didn't turn out this way, it would have been, it would have given our next generation's a place to go for water at a, at another time. So we own the land, we got this good report from the DEP. Next up is that comments need to be addressed. There's a handful of things, I don't know if he has it up there, the land purchase.
You, you included them here, so we have them, from Millis and the other towns.
So you know what I'm talking, I just, I guess the public, anybody listening in. So we're moving forward, so I don't know if you have this. Barry, do you have schedules you can?
Yeah, I do, that's true.
You know, the schedule, I get some scribbling on this, but you're going to get something like this. You've seen it before. I don't know if we can get this on camera, but-
Thank you, sir.
Mine wouldn't be a good one. You've seen this before.
Yep.
So it shows where we are. If you look at the green line coming down through it, do you have an extra one by any chance?
Yeah, you can use this one.
Can you just, I don't know if you can spread it out there, it does focus, I've noticed on TV. If you can just lay it on the table here. If it is viewable, I can't see it with it touching my face, so I don't know how they're going to see it. So you can see with the, there's a green line, you have a date, you have all the tasks to the left column and then you have a date timeline going across. And there's a light green line that shows us that we're in March and where we are on the schedule. So if I were to put this together in a summary without reading all the technical terms going down the line. We answer the questions and we get satisfaction from the DEP that we've covered all our bases with the concerns from the Charles River Watershed, the town of Millis, the town of Franklin. If I've left any, I'll jump in. There's a couple of other little things that we need to do and it's, it was a-
Basically, DEP is looking for some proof of our water conservation efforts in the past. Proof of mailers, flyers, looking for us to implement more of that in the future. We had to submit our Zone 2 map that was approved at town meeting in the fall. Few comments to Millis, few comments left to the Charles River Watershed Association, but I think we have everything addressed that they're asking us.
Has there been any, I mean, has there been any adjustment to the amount we're allowed to pump in a given year based on population growth?
No, see, though, basically, our, our permit will be coming up soon, I believe it's 2021. Uh, our permit's gonna be coming up, and that's gonna be our opportunity to readdress withdrawals and anything for our system.
And that's based on growth, so, um, I think you've seen that scale before. It goes like that with time, with projected growth and so forth. But the big value with it, again, is, um, we have the wa, you know, we can supply the water better with this new well.
Right.
And, you know, like I said, if there's a demand on the water with two wells, we go deeper into the ground until, you know, we hit bottom, and we don't wanna ever do that. You want the wells to rest, you want the cone of influence to, um, recharge itself without that suction demand that, that is, um, applied with the pumps and stuff like that. So three wells is great. And then when we're done with this, Jim, I've said it a million times, Kevin, we, we gotta go look at another well somewhere else.
You're never gonna stop.
Need to keep going. Maybe twice our size, but they get fourteen wells.
Pardon me.
I think Rentham's got thirteen, twelve wells.
Sorry, I apologize.
So, you know, that's what it is. So where we are right now is, after what I've just said there, is that, uh, you know, we're getting close to, um, getting into the design phase. So not to stall this any longer, because we wanna get water online as soon as possible. I think I'd like to authorize, um, our consultants to go ahead with the design, you know, with the design, whatever design elements are, figure out some costs. We've already fine, um, approved funds for it, and then at some point we'll go to bid. Then we get it into the system and whatever else they make us do.
You concur.
Absolutely.
We concur.
Yeah. The good news for anybody that has just catching up on this is the water source is good, it's clean, it was tested. Um, doesn't need any chlorine, but we'll see, um, because it goes, and it all goes to the same tank, and it all blends anyways, but, uh.
Long time coming. It's good news.
Yeah.
Good news.
Yeah. Unless you have any questions.
No.
No.
Done.
Nope, we're good.
Good.
Where we go from here to, uh?
Do I go to Park or Lawrence Street?
Orange Street's Bridge and Walkway.
Yep. So, um, I'm sure there is, um, a lot of people anxious to find out what's going on, you know? Where are we with the promises that we've made as construction? So, you know, we just do the best that we can. But I was down there just the other day, they finally poured. So there's two kinda grants there. We have a, you know, we have the small municipal bridge grant for five hundred thousand dollars. And then we have the mun, uh, the, the causeway grant, which, which is the street improvements, utilities, uh, cantilever sidewalk that brings us up into the neighborhoods. And, um, Kevin, you had a, uh, I know that you've probably got a better idea of where we are with the schedule on this, but, uh, they just poured the bridge deck. I don't know if you can go back to a picture, you know, I'm not looking that way, so that's just the other morning. So that's, that's the actual bridge. All the foundation work is done, a lot of the concrete work is done. A lot of things were done that you just can't see there, that, um.
I, I was down there today.
Oh, you were, good. So there's the approach coming from Park Street, and on of course the other side, there's, uh, concrete underneath there, slabs that'll get backfilled. And asphalt will go on top of that. Water and the utilities are all, um, I didn't get any good pictures of that, but you'll see that it's all precast, the holes for the pipes to go through, for water to go through, for electricity and, uh, cable and, and all those things. So a lot of the things that are getting done there wouldn't give the average person a lot of satisfaction. It's tough stuff, it's on the ground, it's hard to measure, but it's, you know. Kevin, you could probably answer this better, but I, I think we're somewhere combined fifty to seventy-five percent.
Absolutely, yep.
Right in that area somewhere. You separate them out, we could say that the bridge is at seventy-five percent and the causeway is at maybe fifty or a little bit better. I, I didn't know if, um, it was worthy of, of bringing up right now, but the water right now is, um, as you know, it's stubbed at, um, Park Street. Just comes down, uh, Lawrence Street a little bit. And, um, I've been thinking about this, and I've been thinking about this, and I just don't see any reason why we just don't take it upon ourselves to get that water over the bridge. It's actually gonna be done within the bridge. It's just stubbed on both sides, 'cause it's precast type of thinking. Get that water all the way down, past the causeway, and just short of, uh, right at the edge of this project where the, uh, the station.
I thought we had agreed to do that.
I don't know who in the world knows it besides us three.
Um, we've talked about it during some of our liaison interactions, but.
Cause you had not talked about it as well. You're talking about the nine hundred and fifty-seven feet.
Exactly right.
It makes all the sense in the world while it's started up. Get it done. Cause you had a cost of about one eighty, somewhere in that range?
No, um.
Much less.
One eighty when we get paid back, but, uh, I'm thinking closer to seventy-five thousand dollars if we, if we use our own contracts to do it.
Am I getting the one eighty? Just dreaming.
It was an estimate done by somebody else, probably.
Okay, okay.
Trying to make you feel bad about them, but.
No, but I could be dead wrong too, don't feel bad.
But, uh.
I, it's a no brainer.
We'll get paid back for this, and if, um, and the way, what I mean by that is that if there is enough money left in the con, in the, uh, in the grants, we can charge the grant for that.
Mm-hmm.
And then if there's development in the future, which I have no care about, um, somebody else will have to pay for it.
Somebody's gonna want the water sooner or later.
That's right.
Including the people that live there.
It's good for the people that live there to get that clean water up there, get off wells, and, uh, something that we're monitoring all the time, so.
You agree.
Not much more to say about that.
We completely agree.
It's a no brainer.
Yep, it is.
Unless you have any questions, that's Lawrence Street, um.
Sure, go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, uh, Mike Judice, Eagle Drive, and I'm very happy to hear that was the number, number one question. We're gonna get the water across the causeway, 'cause obviously this is the time to do it. We wouldn't wanna be here two or three years from now after we spent two million dollars on this project paving the road and digging it up for the water main, so I'm happy to hear that. Um, just a couple of other questions. I know early on, um, when they started getting into the abutments, uh, the condition of the abutments wasn't what was expected. I guess there was not as much concrete there, it was more of a fieldstone type of a construction. So clearly changed condition. Any sense of what the additional cost to deal with that? Uh, you obviously had to do some additional concrete pour over there, you know, has that cost been defined? And if so, what is it, and, and where is that money coming from?
That's like a ten minute answer for that, but, I mean, if you see a bridge that says nineteen oh five over it, and you think that the concrete's in pretty good shape in the abutments, you know? The design engineers would love to think that it's just still formed three foot and stuff like that. That concrete was next to gravel. If, and you saw it yourselves, fellas, that, you know, the front face was done probably in the thirties or maybe in the fifties. Somebody did a little pudge work and disguised it. The demolition of that bridge was the best thing you ever, that ever happened to this town, because all I can imagine is a bus that went over that bridge and didn't make it with a, a busload of kids. So what happened, what was revealed by the demolition was just, um, the timing's unbelievable.
We saw it. The rocks were crumbling.
You know, so, um, yeah, so I, the, the contract, the, uh, the grant itself has some contingency in it. Where, um, when we watch a project like this, I kinda use terms like I step in their neck to make sure that we're not overpaying, we're not, uh, just giving up the change orders. I don't wanna see that money expended, so all of a sudden now the town's gonna come up with it. That could happen. But I feel safe, not safe, I feel comfortable at this stage that there's enough money in that grant that we won't have to come back to the people for supplemental appropriations. So, for instance, we have like, uh, seventy thousand dollars in there for details, and we know we're not gonna spend anywhere close to that. There's, uh, a couple of good things that have happened to us where we know that we're not gonna spend that money. So that all falls back into the pot and we'll be able to use it, so hope that's not, uh, too long an answer to your question, but.
No, not at all. And again, not trying to lay blame or point fingers, and it's obviously an unforeseen condition that had to be dealt with. I just didn't know, excuse me, what the extent of it was, what the extra cost was, and if we had enough to cover it. Cause my recollection was, I thought that the bid came in pretty much right at the total of the two grants.
It was like five thousand dollars.
Didn't seem like there was a lot of, uh, contingency built into that. Second question, as you know, at the very start of the project back in September, one of the first things the contractor did unfortunately was, um, cleaning, clearing grub the south side of the causeway, um, which wasn't supposed to be done. DEP, as you know, issued administrative order and, uh, made Green come up with a restoration plan. Just curious as to where that stands, who's responsible for that? Was that contractor error? Was that, the design drawings not clear in terms of where the clearing should have taken place or not taken place, and, and where does that all stand?
Again, when I answer this question, it just doesn't mean that I'm taking sides. I serve the people in this town. And, um, the construction that happened out in the causeway, I have no allegiance to the, uh, the contractor that is doing the work or the design engineer. I kind of, um, see that it's kind of their fault combined. Maybe the design drawings, uh, were off a six inches to a foot, because that's the only tolerance you have out there. When they started clearing and grubbing the, the banking, the root underground was all intertwined. So if you grab one, unless you surgically cut it and stuff like that, you almost couldn't blame them. So the mitigation is gonna happen. That causeway had to be built. When you take out that greenery and stuff like that, much like the bridge, you can see that that need for this upgrade was imminent. Um, because all you had down there was a visual barrier that gave you any kind of feeling of safety. You take those trees that were, you know, those trees were half trees. You take them away, it's like going down a steep set of stairs without a banister. And, um, so to me.
We drove on it for a week or two after it was cleared, and yeah, it was a whole different experience.
You could get this feeling.
Because you don't have that visual.
So imagine a little piece of ice, and again, I go back to the buses, my best, uh, correlation of. So, um, so what's happening is, um, we've got the mitigation was, uh, priced somewhere up. It was a delay that was unfortunate. That, that bothers me too. But the, the, the mitigation was priced at like a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to fix it, and, um, but we get that closer to, uh, down to like sixty thousand, and we've made it quite clear, Kevin and I meet with the contractor and design engineer, and it's, it's their problem to figure out who's gonna pay for it, so.
That's good to hear.
It is.
Uh, and then lastly for me, just schedule, I think the last time we saw the update, it was saying mid-May. Is that still?
Yeah, I think we're still on schedule for that.
We had a posting today for an update for our March. Um, in that update, you'll see that there are two milestones that have had a little bit of delay due to ground freezing, mainly as it retains to putting in the utility and whatnot. Um, but our end date for the road reopening has not been adjusted. We are still targeting May seventeenth for the road to be reopened.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, David Mastro, twenty-six Lawrence Street. With that May seventeenth, uh, target date, if it's not reached, is now the, um, construction company or, or whoever's in charge, is, are they, will they be penalized for not reaching that May seventeenth deadline? Cause I know that, that also goes with the grant, 'cause you have to have a certain deadline for the project. I mean, that's part of their delay too, was because they pulled out all that shrubbery and had an error, so that should be on the contractor, not on us for the town. I mean, is that in writing that we have that to protect ourselves?
Well, I think that's, uh, bid spec language, if you wanted somebody else. I didn't know if, can I?
Anyone, uh, up there is more than welcome to answer it.
But when you get together and you have a project, and a lot of people seem to miss this, and I just stay out of the conversation. When you get a project, and you know you're gonna do that project, the best thing you can do is make that the best damn project you can. That means that you work with the contractor, the design engineer, um, everybody. And, and if we start, but Dave, you gotta imagine, if we start saying to those guys, hey, listen, you're gonna pay us five hundred dollars a day and stuff like that, the project goes a little sour. That's there, it's in the specifications, and I think it's best to address it when it's, when we think we're up against a wall with it.
But yeah, I mean, the project was rushed to start in August, and I remember talking to the previous town manager, and I had a heated debate with him. And then all of a sudden, we had a three week delay, and, you know, and that was because of the engineering and construction company, we put them, put them together, okay? That's not the taxpayer's fault, okay? The project was pushed quickly so it could, so it could meet these deadlines. As a taxpayer, I don't wanna be paying for that. That's not our fault. That's not ours. And we shouldn't have to pay for that. That should come out of those two groups. Simple as that.
Well.
That's a three week delay, over a three week delay because of their error. Cause I remember through the walkthrough, being there, I was in my yellow duck suit, saying, there is no bank. You're right here, if you pull this stuff out, this is gonna happen. And everyone's like, yeah, yeah, and, and Bob, you were there too.
I was, yeah, yeah.
I was in my nice little duck suit, 'cause it was raining. And we had said, look, there is no room here. There is no bank. I mean, we were, as the people who were living there, trying to tell people that, and they ripped it out. And, you know, and then all, you know, if this is delayed, or if, I don't know, it happens, whatever. But again, that should fall in the, not for the town to pay for.
I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer the question, because I've, I've learned this lesson on several occasions over a whole bunch of years. Uh, I won't argue whether you're right or wrong. I will tell you that that's something we will tell you after the fact. You, you never get into a forum and you speculate what you may or may not penalize someone based on certain conditions. We, we let the project, we move the project forward as best we can, and then we deal with these events after the fact, not before the fact. Because you're speculating, we're creating situations, we may even harm our opportunity if we get into what we would do based on certain circumstances. So I, I hear your point. We're well aware of the timeframes. We will deal with whatever the appropriate contract allows us to do, should that need arise, if that problem does occur. But we, we can't discuss potential issues like that ahead of something happening like that. It is not well advised for the town.
My other question is, have they removed material from the contaminated site? All material?
No, they, um, up until probably a week ago, uh, three days ago, they could have. But it's one time in, and it's one time out. So long as it, it gets moved and they're not working it every single day, they're gonna be taking it out. They just had this bridge and they needed to pour it and stuff like that. They're going to, I've, um, I've talked to, uh, is it Brett? I'm sorry, the, the foreman involved and stuff like that. They promised that if it isn't out of here this week, it'll be out next week. But they're not gonna do a little every day, they're gonna get it out all at once.
But, I mean, they've been driving their trucks around that foundation, taking dirt off and running it. That's PCBs on that dirt. You move tires with that dirt onto now that causeway, that's cross contamination. I mean, and I hope those workers know that they're dealing with PCBs. PCBs get absorbed into your body. Your body can't get rid of it. I hope those workers know that for the safety of the town, that they're working on it right on top of contamination.
Dave, do you know if the PCPs are?
Yes, there's the dots. They showed where they were. They're also on the foundation, where, where they.
Well, my instructions, I didn't know that they were tracking through PCPs. I didn't know, they're on site, but where are they located?
Every day, and they would be driving around their trucks, moving the dirt and so on. I, I went running into them, saying, you gotta be careful, this contamination. Of course, I got yelled at being right there, but, uh, you know, I was at the fence and they yelled at me, so I went back. But then I called the town, and I said, you know, they, you know, you gotta be careful, I mean.
I'll look into, uh, I'll get.
I mean, that's heavy contamination. They, they, they need to get rid of it. I mean, that's liability against us, to us the town, if they get sick. I mean, we have to cover ourselves too, I think.
So were that truckers track, tracking, there's PCPs?
They're driving around the foundation, that dirt is contaminated.
They're working here and the PCPs were found over here or something. I.
They, they haven't physically shown on the map speculation as to where it is, until all the testing comes back.
Testing has come back. They showed dots where they, they, they believe they found it.
That was the other testing, the, the PCBs that we, the testing we saw was a little bit farther away from where they were.
Not the one I saw.
Until, until we get the exact plans and everything, and all the testing, I don't think we can assume where they are if we don't know where they are.
Another thing to bring up too, is the fact that, you know, although we understand that there is currently an order that's been given to us by DEP for what we're allowed to do in terms of storage on that site, in terms of it being on concrete slabs, the town is taking an extra step to have all that stuff moved off because of what's coming up and the uncertainty surrounding some of the testing that's going on around that site. So the direction that we've given them to remove everything off of the site completely is purely, uh, an action taken by the town to protect ourselves. So we are taking those steps.
But I, I would believe you want it sooner than later. I mean, just the sooner you do it. I mean, even waiting a week or two, that's. I mean, I mean, once, once where that, that contamination was there, I would have had them removed it right away. You, you wouldn't have waited. I mean, it's always error on the side of safety. That's what we're always taught.
Okay, uh, the way I saw it, David, was like, if it's, if it's two days to move it, what's the difference if it's two days today or two days in three weeks, as long as you're not in the site? What you're telling me is news, is that they're driving around on that thing.
Yeah, I mean, that's how they were moving dirt. That's how they were moving dirt. That's how they were moving dirt to the causeway. That's where they put the dirt.
Right. That's history.
They have to drive in there and around it, so I mean.
Okay, let me just look into it before I cast stones against the.
I mean, I, that's what I saw.
I got you. I know you're, you're concerned, and.
I was just concerned for the workers. I'm saying that you have to be careful.
Yeah. I just know that, uh, I'm just Mr. Practical here. I'm not a scientist.
I just wanted, the, the safety of the workers.
But what about all the kids that have been riding their motorcycles around there and stuff like that?
Well, that's another thing too. I mean, that's another thing that I think we as a town have to warn people who were in there.
Yeah, so that's what I meant about being practical. I, I don't see anybody come down with anything, yeah, but I'm, I'm way out of my field here. I, I'll look into it for sure.
We agree, we'll look into it. Your, your point's well taken. We'll, we'll look into it and do whatever we can.
That's what we have to protect ourselves.
No much more to say about that.
City Mills.
Yeah, so, um, that's it. I'm gonna move on to City Mills. I brought somebody along, Jim. I know that we're pressed for time, uh, or at least we're running past our time.
We're here as long as we need to be, Bob.
Um, Greg, can you come up? Greg is from power engineering, and power is. Greg is from power engineering and PAR is Ben.
A new acquaintance for me as far as consulting goes. I like them because they're professionals.
He shows up at a nine o'clock meeting.
Good reputation and they're down the street, you don't have to go to Silver Hill.
Welcome. Okay, thanks, thanks for having me.
Just before you do it, just so you know, and the people that are listening to us, that we do have a two hundred thousand dollar grant to study that bridge and to make recommendations and to do limited repairs to it.
Won't be a lot though, for two hundred grand, unfortunately.
Unfortunately, so part of our challenge is to make that stretch as much as we can. Just to give you a brief, brief history of the dam, City Mills Pond Dam, Main Street, right by the Chem chemicals building. From what we can tell from the limited construction information we have, we can trace it back to about mid eighteen hundreds. I'm sure it's older than that, but it's very limited information on the history of the dam itself. Back in two thousand fourteen, a phase one, it's called, there's different types of inspections that we do for dams, depending on the type of dam. The importance of the dam, the size of the dam and everything else determines the frequency of what inspections are done. Inspection, phase one inspection was done two thousand fourteen. On the dam was determined the dam is in poor condition and structurally deficient. And two thousand, in April of two thousand seventeen, the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation's Office of Dam Safety issued what's called a dam safety order to the town with instructions for them to perform certain tasks to begin to upgrade the condition of the, of the structure. One of the requirements is that there were, the town is now required to have, contract an engineer, a dam engineer, to do, perform regular, what's called poor-conditioned dam follow-up inspections. Those are done on a six-month interval. PAR was hired to do, to begin those in May of two thousand seventeen. We've done one in November of two thousand, I mean, May of two thousand eighteen, rather. I've got my years mixed up. Right, yes. And then we've done one in November of two thousand eighteen. The next scheduled one is for two months from now. Those continue to be done until DCR's Office of Dam Safety determines that the condition of the dam has improved enough to where we can go back to more frequent for this type of dam. The typical inspections are done on a five-year interval. It's considered a significant hazard dam, an intermediate size, so that gives it certain regulations to go by. So we did the poor-conditioned follow-up inspection and we began a series of small, I guess you'd call it incremental steps to address the Office of Dam Safety's concern about certain elements that are deficient of the dam, including excessive leakage around the spillway, the growth of mature trees along the dam, which includes a dike that extends around the corner from there. Some deterioration of the concrete, some depressions in the roadway and some other minor things that they've, they've determined need to be addressed. We, PAR, did an initial inspection of the culvert structure itself, the main spillway. It's a concrete structure next to the Chem chemicals building. Matter of fact, they share a common foundation at that point. We did that in the late summer to early fall of two thousand, of two thousand eighteen. I'm getting my years confused here, they blend together after a while. And we looked at the, the structure itself to determine, the first step was, we worked with Bob, to go through and do a full-blown analysis and a full, just jump both feet into the water, so to speak, to say, okay, we need to address this. We wanted to look at it incrementally because we wanted to see, okay, what were the problems with the dam? What's the capacity of the dam? How can we improve that to meet regulatory requirements? Regulatory requirements require that the dam be able to pass certain amount of rainfall in storm events at certain times. And this, the dam was determined not to be deficient. It was deficient in inability to pass the required storm flow for a significant hazard dam. So the first thing, we're talking with Bob, was like, okay, we know that the, the concrete bridge that's there, the culvert that's there is in, it's in tough shape. It's an old structure. Let's look at the condition of that structure to see what, you know, first of all, for safety, to see what it would look like underneath and get a good, good idea of that. So we performed an inspection on it. We found that most of it was due to just concrete deterioration, mostly due to age, corrosion of the reinforcing, and most, and a lot of times it's due to the inability for it to resist freeze-thaw cycles. And that's pretty common in concrete of that age. It's not necessarily an indicator of deterioration or structural inadequacy. It's just the technology has improved so that the concrete that's produced today is more durable. We looked at that and said that, you know, honestly, to replace the structure, it's not necessary. It's an old structure, but it can, we can perform repairs on that structure. So we're looking at producing some plans that are in the final stages of design to do some concrete repairs, to extend the life of the structure with that. We also looked at, in part of that, we also did a hydraulic analysis of the watershed, of the pond and of the Mill River, the, to a certain length downstream where we could say we could effectively, that the dam didn't have any influence. We did confirm DCR's statement that the dam structure as itself right now is inadequate to pass the required storm flows due to a, from a hydraulic modeling standpoint. And then part of what we did for the hydraulic report was to look into remedial measures. How can we, how can we address that? And we've come up with a couple of possibilities because we went and did a bunch of situations to, the easiest thing to do would be to remove that concrete culvert and make it bigger, make anything bigger, to allow it to pass more storm flows, but it's not necessarily, doesn't, doesn't make the most sense economically.
Can you do an aerial?
Mm-hmm. Right. So what it means is, such structure itself, the whole structure itself is in generally decent shape. For a hundred and fifty-year-old structure, it's in good shape. To, so to completely remove that, to make something bigger, to satisfy regulatory requirements seemed a little, little hasty. We've come up with a possible scenario of being able to modify the spillway, that it is, you know, the, the concrete walls that allow the water to spill over, to enlarge in them in place to allow them to take more water. As well as, that would need to be done with a, there is a stone culvert on the other end of the dam where the trees are, enlarging that. And that spills into like a basin that's sort of in between where the gravel parking lot is and the paved road is. And we could utilize that space to sort of gain a little bit of storage, so between the two. With that, it would allow us to satisfy that regulatory requirement to pass the storm flows. The problem with these regulatory requirements is that the DCR is making that more and more, putting more and more precedence on that because of the frequency that these storms, we know is getting, it's more frequent and the storms are becoming more severe. So as we have these hundred-year storm events, necessarily don't occur every hundred years now. So we've presented that in the hydraulic report that was given to Bob to review, and then that will be used as a basis, basis basically for the next steps that will occur in the future. Another thing that we have addressed to, in DCR's concerns, was with the tree, the tree growth along the dam. Trees are one of the worst things you can have for a dam structure because of numerous reasons. Most of them is when they die. When they die, they leave spaces that allows water to go through and it can potentially get through to the other side of the dam and cause, cause problems. Piping and then eventually, you could have, during a high storm event, you could end up having a breach of the dam in a certain spot. We put together a tree removal plan that we presented to the Conservation Commission last week for a filed notice of intent. We expect to get the order of conditions next week. So to essentially remove this, this series of old-growth trees through there. And to sort of explain, as I always tell people, that, that the trees, they look aesthetic or whatever, but the, the trees are basically the result of a hundred years of deferred maintenance. So they're allowed to grow and then people become used to it. Part of that tree removal plan will be done, Bob is con, will be contracting tree trees. Potentially to cut the trees and undo with their forces, to keep the price down. So it'll be done a little bit. And once the notice of intent goes, we can clear. It'll, the stumps and all the root structure will be removed, the slopes will be regraded, planted, seeded and cleaned up. And now it'll become a lot easier to maintain with that. The, and that's, that's basically the next, call that the first step. The next step will be with the beams, to prepare the concrete beams. To do that, to basically prolong the life of that crossing structure. And then from there, it's basically a matter of picking away at the items of deficiency in a manner that can be done as, you know, as you have money, instead of putting it all, because to do, to address rehabilitation of a dam the size, you're into multiple millions of dollars to do that. Now, with that, we have a good relationship with DCR where we're able to at least keep them updated on the progress so that eases some of the restrictions that they have time-wise. Because they, they realize financial constraints. Everybody has or whatever else. As long as we're making progress is a big thing for them. But the anticipated, right now, the anticipated timeline to begin the tree clearing is soon as, basically we can get the order of conditions. So middle of, you know, by the beginning of April, we should have that, be ready to go and get to construction. And that will basically allow, you know, them to get that tree cleared and that part of the puzzle sort of taken care of. And then utilize this two hundred thousand dollars of the grant to effectively, to address a lot of the, the more, as Barry alluded to before about some things, about the low-hanging fruit. The things that are easy to repair quickly and economically and cheaply. So that's part of the, the plans for doing the repairs. Now, in the meantime, the Office of Dam Safety issued another dam safety offer, dam safety order to every community in Massachusetts that has a significant hazard dam. In that emergency, it's called an emergency action plan needs to be prepared. It has been required in the past for high-hazard dams. And basically, it's a plan to, how to respond to certain types of emergencies. Who will respond, what the procedures are, when to notice what a problem is, and then also the effects of, if there were a problem at the dam, what downstream areas, what downstream residents are affected? And how do we contact them and get to them? Late last year, the Office of Dam Safety just wanted to expand that requirement to not only high-hazard dams, but to significant hazard dams, which is a significant, significant number of dams within the state. City Mills Pond Dam was one of them. That we are currently working on preparing an emergency action plan for that. And that is required by the end of the year. And it's also required to be updated annually after that. So we are working to, to get that done, and we anticipate that to be done by the end of the year. It'll be an overwhelming task for DCR to go through several thousand reports at the end of the year, but we'll be getting ours, we'll be making sure we satisfy that deadline because we don't want to be missing any of those deadlines with that.
Is there a chance, just out of curiosity, if we had that catastrophic storm, we had one like, I think, ten, twelve years ago where we had significant flooding on Midway Branch?
Two thousand ten.
Two thousand ten was a good year, yeah.
Really amazing how much water. Is there a chance that if the dam is that partially fragile, that that type of surge could take it out and then in turn significantly damage the bridge?
There's always that possibility for that. What we've, our modeling has shown is that the dam will overtop. And not so much in a instability part. What we worry about is there's leakage around the spillway itself, heavy leakages. We worry about more about water finding its way around those type of openings, conduits.
Trees and issues like that.
Right, and that's generally what causes a lot of the damage. A lot of the damage you saw in two thousand ten, out central and western part of the state, had to do with that type of failure. A lot of times it's caused by undersized outlets.
So it wasn't the surge or the power of the dam, it was just more the water, okay?
Right, right, yes, and it was water, it's the water that finds its way around everything that causes most of the damage. It's very rare that the dam itself overtops.
I don't want to say that's good news, but it's been a real danger for that.
So it's, it's, that is a very much a concern. That's why they're addressing these undersized outlets to make sure, because they, a lot of times it becomes inundated, it becomes submerged, and that's when the problems start, is when that outlet isn't allowed to flow freely.
So you know the, you know the dirt road that people park?
Yeah.
Where there's a culvert that goes underneath, you can see it from Main Street?
Yeah.
Drill it through, it's all handcrafted stone and stuff like that. So if we get this big, so if we go over to that side there, I'm not sure if we can do this, create a way where we can control the water on the event that we have a, this big rainstorm come, we let more water out there, we take the pressure off the dam. The problem with the dam is, the dam is kind of monolithic with a bridge. So we're talking dam, but we're talking bridge too, it's all cast together.
It's all, yeah, one piece, but that is part of our plan, is on that outlet. We, we would replace it with a, with some sort of a structure where you're allowed to gradually, right?
Thing that, I'm not sure, I still can't get it out of them, but there, so the water goes through the dam and like the bridges at Lawrence Street, there's wing walls. It goes like this, so it funnels the water through that. The problem is that the water's going under, you know, it's going through the dam, but it's going underneath the wing walls too. So it's coming out the other end where it's not supposed to. So where it's concrete and we're traveling over this road, it's, it's kind of like if we could just have x-ray vision and look down through and see what kind of cavities there are and we could fill those cavities, it would restrict that water back to where it belongs to go. You know, where it needs to go, because that's made with all compaction. And when water gets through, you know, you've lost compaction. So you have nesting under there, something's leaning on something, holding up that strength. So he's got some way of, is it sonar or something like that?
Yeah, that's good, that's sonic impulse, actually, it's a newer technology now that, that works a little bit different than radar. That can detect the voids. I mean, that, that would be our, our next proposed step. The problem with, we've gone, I've explained this to Bob, that our concern is that we have leakage around the backside. The problem with, it's easy to fix that leakage. There's different ways we can do it. We can drill down and inject, you know, concrete, and there's other ways to cut things off. Problem that concerns me is not, is not addressing that leakage, it's, the water has to go somewhere so we need to make sure we have a good understanding of what the water's doing as it goes in through the dam and out the other side. Because what you don't want to do is move the problem someplace else. So that's why, like Bob says, we need to see what's in there. You know, a lot of these structures have stone cores, a lot of them have rubble cores, and they're just sort of added on to over time. Some of them have proper impermeable cores where the water can't go through, and this might just be a, an issue of some settlement around it over time, over the past hundred and something years of time, and if that's an easy fix. What we want to make sure is that we don't stay, we don't, when we're looking at this one area, we don't just say, okay, this is what the problem is and find out that several feet away, we have the same issue, now the water's gonna find its way through there. It's one of those things where we want to fix once, we don't want to have to keep chasing it with that. So that, sometimes that's a little, that's a challenge, that part, is trying to sort of get that.
Eric, can you go up on that a little, go up higher? See the whole place?
Right.
Little bit more. Bring it to the middle. If I could just a minute, this, so all that we're talking about is the potential of letting more water go out this way to take the pressure off that. Try to fix that, but still, as you heard, if you look over the side here, it's quite a, it's like eighteen feet down, it's dangerous if you fall off. The car restraint, well, the guardrail or the concrete barrier there is weakened, that's gonna have to be replaced. I don't know if we'll ever see it, Jim, or even Kevin, but somewhere along the line, I think what's gonna happen is that we're gonna have to construct another bridge to do something with the alignment of this. Leave that alone, because you can't replace this bridge and just cut this off and choke us off from Franklin. It just can't happen. The fire chief will tell you a million reasons why you can't. So I think this stays active, we find the funds to come across here and build another bridge and either make that a walking path in other towns they do that kind of, that could, that's probably the likely future.
No, it could be fifteen years, but if we can buy fifteen years to-
Well, the good news is, I think the bridge is safer than you thought.
Yeah, they, yeah, it's, it's, um-
Because I know when you were down there a couple of years ago, you were very concerned about it.
Concerned about things I can't see, and I just can't see inside, you know?
Right, yeah, so the deterioration that, that we- So the deterioration that, that we found is to be expected of a structure that age. I mean, it's, it's an old structure, so, um, and it's, and it's easy to address with, without the need to. Ideally, it, we should have a new structure there that's, you know, can handle the lows, you know, the flows that we need to, but that's just not practical.
Right.
You know, financially, it's just not practical. And if it doesn't need to be replaced right now, then why, why spend that kind of money?
So you'll keep us updated?
Right.
Great. Yeah, Lake Street on your agenda as well?
Lake Street, okay, Lake.
One of our favorite topics.
Yes. Paving for Lake Street, as you know, was delayed last fall. And PAR, you know, we were, we were hired by Bob to take a look at what it would take to basically permit, permit the project, to get it through. Lake Street, the section that's going to be paved right now, like a dirt road, happens to travel through some, some resource areas for Crystal Lake, Crest Brook, and there's some cold-water fisheries that are affected, and work occurs within the buffer zone of those resources. The paving itself is going to be limited to the sixteen-foot of the roadway, but the work, and there won't be much impact to those resource areas, if any, due to the work. But because it goes through that, the buffer area zone, it is required to be permitted and to get Mast EP approval as well. So we are in the process of preparing some design documents for, that need to be included with the Mast EP filings, as well as a notice of intent to show the, basically provide the paving limits and the paving direction, to keep that, as well as some grades that can be used for permitting documents. I know this is a big priority, so we've made this, this is pretty, pretty hot in our office right now, to get going with that. Now that the weather's a little more favorable for us to do the wetland flagging, we were set to do the wetland flagging a couple of weeks ago, and then we got some snow. Snow has to be fully cleared for us to be able to do that, per DEP requirements.
Should be good by Friday.
Right. And we, we will be doing it more than likely the end of this week to get to that. We will be doing the wetland delineation and the resource delineation that will be necessary. We're preparing the plans right now. We're beginning the permitting process. We're expecting the permitting documents to be done hopefully by the end of May, we will have everything done that can be, we can then go and then file a notice of intent and get put on the, the agenda for Conservation Commission. We'll have the plans, and then Bob will be ready to go to pave as soon as we can, as soon as the weather really is good for it.
Rough guess of timeframe?
Um, with the requirements for the permitting, if everything goes through as planned, I would be guessing towards the end of June.
Paving?
Yes, would be the earliest.
Probably later than that. Remember, ComCom only meets once a month?
That's, oh, that's true.
Yeah, so we're going to probably be looking at more like.
Yeah, so maybe July.
July.
Yeah, because we lose a month.
Yeah, we lose a month.
Okay.
That does, but the road, but the road is another, there's an extra funds now that we need because of this process is.
I know.
Largere bill.
I know.
This whole process was going to happen anyways. We just wanted to get the pavement down to save the life of the fishery in the Crest Brook, because some people don't see it that way. They, you know, the road that's there.
We are where we are.
Yeah.
Right. Part of our, our work is to come up with some ways to address the, there's a pretty significant erosion that we have to look at. It seems to be quite a bit of gravel that gets deposited into the waterway every time you have a heavy storm event.
That's exactly what the pavement would have prevented.
Right.
And that's the triage that we were trying to apply five years ago. Unfortunately, we're still talking about it.
We'll work our way through it.
Yeah.
Great, well, nice to have you on board.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, sure. Hang it in there until...
It's okay.
All right, Mr. McGee, solid waste contract for engineering.
So, um, I hope I'm not missing anything. Well, here's two different contracts to be signed, Jim. There's one recommendation, this is normally what I do with collected water rates.
Yep.
So if you look at my recommendation, there's a little background with it, it's a simple contract.
You have them?
Nope.
No, I think they're all here.
Yep, Bob brought them.
I just finished it today, Sue.
That's okay.
I would have given it to you a week ago.
Of course.
Just give me one sec, Bob. And council, has council seen this, Bob?
No.
Okay, is this a...
Counsel has seen it probably, you know.
It's the standard, standard agreement.
It is, and it's.
Okay.
It's the same language this, to our benefit if there's any change from the last agreement.
Yeah, I noticed that, yeah, I saw that. Okay. All right, Kevin, any questions?
None on mine.
No? None here. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
There you go, sir. Thank you.
I'll trade.
Well, I didn't think anybody had a worse signature than I did, but you get first. You get first place.
It's still evolving.
Yeah.
You need these first, and then you need the rest?
And just so we can get copies. That'd be great.
Okay.
That's the one for me.
That was an easy one. Well, as always, it's a pleasure to see you, and thanks for all you do, Bob.
Absolutely.
Thanks for all you do. You, uh...
Both you and Barry, thank you guys.
Yep, Barry as well. You guys do great work, and we're very appreciative. So, thank you.
Hey, Al.
Oh, Al, how could I ever forget, Al?
I'm nobody's.
Oh, Al, we all know better. We all know better.
Take your complaints.
With all sincerity, Al, thank you for all you have done for many, 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 many years. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night, guys, thank you.
See you, Dave.
All right, we have a few action items, my friend. Please consider appointing Janice Axebird and Thomas Mirabell, is it?
Mirabelle.
Mirabelle, okay, to the Council on Aging. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consider approving Norfolk Clean and Green Campaign on April twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen. Been going on a long time. Can I have a motion, sir?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It'll be their tenth annual.
Uh, please consider signing the deed for sixty-six Priscilla Avenue, Norfolk, Mass. Just quickly for folks, this is a situation where we had an individual resident whose home actually resided half on their own property and half on the town property due to an engineering mistake, I guess is the best way to say it. It's been a complicated process to accommodate this. We had to go to town meeting with a Warren article, which the voters did approve, then subsequently the attorneys and fair market value for the property, and this deed transfers the land over to this gentleman's house for a fair price that allows him now to own the house and potentially sell it if he so chooses. So it's something that had to get done, and we thank the voters for agreeing to this. So, do I have a motion to approve the deed, signing?
I motion to approve the deed for sixty-six Priscilla Ave, Norfolk, Mass.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Could I ask, how much land is being conveyed? Do you know the size of the plot?
Should say, right, indeed.
Look it up. I don't think it says.
Yeah, it came from Dave Deluga's office.
It's in consideration of $50,000, if that's your question, but it's, it's property that, it's a no-brainer, and no one really knows where the mistake was made. There were two lots, one owned by the town, one owned by another person, and engineers unfortunately placed the house half on each lot. That's the Cliff Note version of what happened.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. How many of these do we need?
Just that one set.
Okay.
I have to overnight them.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. While you're signing, can I go ahead and make a motion to approve some minutes?
Please do, sir.
I move to approve the minutes from February fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, and February twenty-first, nine, two thousand and nineteen.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion to approve the warrants. Uh, let's see, warrant in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-three cents that I signed, warrant in the amount of five thousand, excuse me, five million, two hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirty-six cents, and, um, and the amount of sixty dollars, that's an interesting one, and the amount of two hundred and twenty-six dollars, two hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety cents, duly signed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Could I again ask what these warrants are for?
Pay our bills. We sign them every week.
Okay. Thank you.
Just those three signatures?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Well, we have this memorandum of understanding. I think this has to be signed too. Did you, do we sign that?
There should be a copy in here. Mortgage affidavit.
Was that part of the packet?
Yeah, I think, well, let's sign it. It's just saying that there's no mortgage on the property.
Okay.
And you don't need this, another one signed? Okay.
Nope, I have to make copies and sign this today.
Good deal.
We have this conference. That's Jim's, something else.
All right. Do we have any other business in open session?
Nothing on my end.
Oh, it's right here.
We will be going into executive session for the purposes of discussing contract negotiations with the police and fire union, where if held in a public session would be detrimental to the town's position. We have a roll call vote.
Kevin Calcutt, aye.
Jim Lehan, aye.